Yeah, Jody. Just come in here. I'm taking John's stuff first, first time on my crack.
Are you? He's gonna come and do a pack test with me.
See, I wondered if you might.
Well, yes.
Because then if he does well, maybe he comes the next year, it's already done that.
Yes, texted me yesterday and said, because he's gonna go over my yard and do some work for me.
Okay.
Use equipment, so he was talking about Saturday, so it was supposed to rain, but we're gonna be doing a pack test anyway, but said, "You're invited, man, if you want to go have something to do Saturday." He did on it.
Yeah, anyone that supports Saturday, you can come. Okay, we'll go ahead and get started here with our public hearing portion. Sure, it looks like you're the only one zoomed in here. There was a notice on the website that we're hoping you can hear, but our microphone sound system is not working, so you will not be able to communicate with us. But hopefully you can hear us and you can see, it looks like you're signed on. We'll go ahead and start our public hearing. There's a number of items that are included, and our public hearing comments that was posted, we'll only, our only being, will be, if any of the people present here physically at the location, those will be the only public comments which we will take, other than we received two public comments from residents in email, and we'll file those with our, with our minutes for tonight, but we will not read their comments. So, for the record, first item of public hearing is an amendment to city code Title 11, and it has to do with the definition of open space in our city ordinances. We do not have a description of open space in our definitions, and it's proposed that we create one which will be defined as lots. An area generally set aside in a subdivision for public use, including but not limited to parks, recreation, hiking, and bicycle trails, ponds, or other non-residential facilities to enhance the community and provide an open space living environment in the surrounding area. So that, do we have any public comment particularly on that definition from those present? None? Okay. We'll move on to the next area. It's adding a paragraph requiring as-built construction. We have not had this requirement in the past, and it pertains to once subdivision has been, a phase of it has been completed, that the subdivision provide to the city as-built engineer drawings for those things that have deviated from what was proposed in their, in their final plat. So where they've had to deviate for whatever reason, through the inspection process, those would be approved, but we, the city wants to retain the drawings for those as-built construction in the subdivision, so that we understand and know where changes were made and can keep that on file. So, the section of ordinance that we cover that would be a new 11-4-9, conditions for issuance of the building permit. Says, "No building permit shall be issued for any lot in the subdivision by the building official prior to recording of the final plat and the completion of all improvements required by and as specified in Section 1141 or 1143 of this chapter." Those are already included in the ordinance. And it says, "Exclusions to this rule shall be in compliance with Section 11-4-4 of this chapter," and that's already in place. So the part would be added is Part B of 11-4-9, and it would read accordingly. "As part of the final submission inspection process by the city engineers, any as-built construction details must be provided to the city by the way of drawings or flat plat amendments or engineers drawings, or otherwise as been specified by the city building official." So that would be added to our ordinance to receive as-built construction details. Any comments from those present regarding that? Any public comment? Okay?
Sorry.
Pardon me? Yes, man?
Yeah, just on the, and I'm sure you guys will work through this, so clarify a little bit, the change proposed, proposed change about not issuing building permits prior to a final plat being recorded and completed. I'm assuming that means you're talking, when you say building, you mean like vertical, like permits for homes?
Yes.
Okay, not the, okay.
No, not the work that's going on in the subdivision framework structure. The next item on the public hearing agenda is, has to do with Title 11-5-10, a hillside development. And it's being proposed to remove city code 11-5-10 from the city code and maintain in 2.14 Title Hillside Development of Development and Construction Standards for subdivisions. A number of years ago, a single page of the Hillside Development Standards got incorporated into the subdivision ordinance. This was done at the time of codification. And so it's been in both places, and been both in the subdivision ordinance where it was put to, but has always been in the Development and Construction Standards. So just to clarify, and only a portion of it was brought over, and to clarify it, we want it left in the Development and Construction Standards, and so it'll remain there without being changed. So we're just removing a part of it from the subdivision standard, but it remains in its entirety in the Development and Construction Standards. So, any comments from those present regarding that? Okay. The next item in the public hearing is amendment following the definitions in city code of 10-2-1. This is our city code having to do with zoning and land use matters. There's been an issue raised with a couple of definitions that are included in the Title 10, having to do with open space. There are two words that have been used to define portions of a lot. And we've had some engineers get confused that that was pertaining to use as a noun for open space, where the intent of it was to just define the sides of the lot or the back part of the lot as open space. And so, and interestingly enough, in our definitions, there was not a definition for open space. So this, this part, which will go into the following page, identifies what open space is, and changes the definition, taking out the word open space in the identification of primarily setbacks of lots, which I'll read to you and it'll become more clear to you.
So that they don't have that confusion anymore in thinking that residential open space is actually public open space.
Exactly right, yep. That's the purpose behind it. The current, front, yard front, current definition is "An open space extending a full width of the lot between a building and the front lot line, unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward except as herein specified." So the proposed definition for that will be "An area extending the full width of the lot between a building and the front lot line, unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward except as herein specified." So the words open space have been substituted for an area extending, to do away with that confusion. So that would be the front yard. The rear yard, then the current definition reads "An open space extending the full width of the lot between a building and rear lot line, unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward except as herein after specified." Proposed definition, proposed definition would be yard rear and an area extending the full width of the lot between a building and rear lot line, unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward except as herein specified, again substituting the words open space to an area extending.
Well, actually just an area, because extending is a whole.
Yep.
It says an open space extending, and now it says
An area extending.
So really it's an open spa, an area is substituted for an open space.
Yes, yeah. I see what you're saying, okay. And going on to the yard side, the definition currently shows says "An open space extending from the front yard to the rear yard between a building and the nearest side lot line, unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward except as herein after specified." The proposed, proposed definition is yard side, again, "An area extending from the front yard to the rear yard between a building and the nearest side lot line, unoccupied and unobstructed from the ground upward except as herein after specified." So, it just changed to get rid of that word open space. So, are there any comments from those present relating to those changes? The third item of the public hearing, our current Development and Construction Standards, we would like their, they're included as a, it says in Development and Construction Standards that they're part of the subdivision ordinance. And we want to emphasize that, and so we'd like to change the title of those from just City Development and Construction Standards to City Development and Construction Standards for Subdivisions. So that there's clarity. They're designed for subdivisions, but there are likely parts of them that may pertain, in fact, it says "Governs all construction within the city, has the standards for those, but primarily is for subdivisions." As they may relate to other things, and we'll consider them as other things as they pertain to it. But we just felt that there was a, we needed to clarify that. Are there any comments from those present regarding those? We'll, we'll take those as, as items to consider later in the agenda then as we, as we go forward with the agenda. To that end then, our public hearing is concluded. There's no further comments, and we'll go into our regular planning commission evening meeting. Call it to order. John, we often don't get to pledge in your company, would you lead us in a pledge tonight to have a joint vacation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our father and mother, as we gather here this evening as planning commissioners and members of this community, we're so thankful for the, this community that we live in, for this area that we live in, or this country that we live in, or appreciate our freedoms, what we enjoy, and appreciate those who guide and direct us. And we pray that they will be with us this evening, that we can be guided to make those decisions that would benefit the community as a whole, and that our actions will continue to help the city progress. And we, and also bless our leaders of this community and our leaders of this nation, that they might be guided as that would have directed. We ask them as we travel this evening from our meetings, that we might help do so with safety, and we pray for these things in the name of Jesus Christ.
Thank you. To reiterate a little bit, John serves as one of our alternate commissioners. Since there's no Zoom audio communication, I ask him to attend in person, which he's graciously agreed to do. He offers opinion on things, but he's not a voting member.
But you can't say really him.
If he were replacing, but if you were absent, then he
So if I leave, then he has to vote.
That's right, that's right. Of course, if you leave, he's gonna leave too.
Yeah, if we leave, it's probably the same reason.
So, anyway, just, that's why John won't be voting with us, but we'll look for his opinion on things nonetheless. First item of business is our March 16 Planning Commission Minutes. I take a motion for approval, those were done and all sent out. I didn't get any notice for any corrections or changes to be made, so I didn't make any for once. Anyway, entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of March 16.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Ted, second. Any further discussion of those? Okay, all in favor of approving those minutes?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. The next item up is review preliminary subdivision of Nate Crowe. It's called Five Maples Preliminary Subdivision. Nate, we'd like you to, if you would just kind of step up here and give us a, I think I've sent everybody a copy of, of it.
Yes.
And so, just go ahead and give us a brief overview of it, what your plans are.
Yeah, I'm not prepared to make a presentation, I was just gonna answer questions.
No, you're, that's fine.
I'll try my best.
Okay.
If I'm missing something, redirect me.
You'll be fine.
My wife and I purchased a piece of property down on Valley View, between Valley View and Lakeview last year, and we'd like to split off a portion of the lot and be able to simply sell that other portion and then build a home on the remaining piece for, for ourselves.
Which of those two pieces are you keeping?
Yeah, I'm guessing one. You weren't supposed to talk, remember?
If I talk, I get a vote. I'll fight, I'll even ask.
I'm teasing, I'm sorry. Anyways, yeah, we're just going through that process now to be able to accommodate the city's requirements.
Okay. Following city council approval of the preliminary plat, I assume you have plans to move forward with the final plat then to finalize?
Yes, sir.
That, so, okay, very well. Any questions anybody has of Nate?
What are water shares ranging for lately?
Oh, yeah, the water shares are expensive. There's a wide range that I found, depending if it's irrigation or whether it's culinary and ready to go or what, so I'm still in that process right now.
Yeah, those will be required, at the time he does his final plat, he'll have to have needed water shares to the city for those two lots, or however many lots you end up.
I just have one additional one, correct? Because I've already got one that runs with the existing parcels, is that correct?
Correct, yep. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you.
I'll take a motion on approval for preliminary plat for five maples. I saw group, okay. Mary made motion, any second?
I'll second you.
Okay, so every second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Very good, thanks so much Nate.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Well, inform this to the city council, and they'll, you'll get notified when it's on their agenda.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. The next is a lot combining done by Jeremy, I thought he might be here tonight, but he's not.
Now, to refresh my memory, he originally had three lots, is that correct?
Originally had two, and they were combined.
Okay.
So he combined lot one and two and built his home on those two lots. Now he's acquired a third lot.
That is adjacent to one.
Adjacent to one and two.
Okay.
Adjacent to one. He has put a, a support cord on it in violation of city ordinance, because it wasn't approved. So he's been told that that's to be on hold for right now, he's to be, he's to do no more work on that. And so that will be a separate issue, but he has got these, this lot combining, and it's all into lot one now, but it's ultimately been combined of three different lots. So there is a fourth lot to the side of him, off the side of Woodland Hills Road there, but that's not his, so. But that's the lot next to the road.
Oh, they're all next to the road?
That was a corner lot.
Corner lot, yeah. The corner lot's the one that's off of it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And there's a fence issue there also, where he's been, he wanted to, he's started to build a fence along Eagle Nest, and it was in violation of city ordinance, and so that's been red-tagged and stopped. And so, the city and Jeremy are going to have to work through the details of that. It was right along the property line on Eagle Nest, which resulted in violation of the, it's a six-foot tall fence. So the city's going to have to deal with that as time moves on. So, we're not dealing with those things now, just the combining.
So the city can't say something like, "We will approve this if the violating fence is removed," or "Once it's removed, then we can approve it?"
You know, I, it's a thought, but I think they're, they're unrelated, and the fence can easily be taken out if that's what it comes to, and it's not related to this lot combining.
Does that fence remind me, I can't remember how far it goes down, does it go into this new lot?
It's all three.
All three?
Yeah. Starts from his driveway on the one side, so it doesn't go to the other side of his driveway. Starts at the driveway and goes all the way down to a corner lot. So I think, it's a thought, but I think probably be unfair to consider that in, in holding that up from a preliminary plat standpoint. So, good question.
Now, you had some concerns or questions separate about combining these lots and addresses related to that?
No. Not now.
Oh, that's another one.
That's another one we'll be talking about today.
Okay.
Yeah, because the address there's already assigned to whoever the house is actually located. Yeah. There's been though, these other two are not, they're not address lots now, because they're part of his one big lot. So they won't have address.
What happens then to, were there three separate water shares?
Yes. There were three separate lawyers. Those are, thank you very much, Mr. Broadbank, those are now owned by the city.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So the city is a benefit to
Three water shares for one lot?
Yeah.
And it also is a benefit to Jeremy, because he no longer has to pay the maintenance fee on the other two lots.
Correct, correct, yeah. And there was a water meter on one of these, but it's being taken out?
Okay.
Is that right, Lori?
I haven't heard that, so I'll
That's my understanding. So he's, he's got two, two meters square, right?
Right now.
Yes, okay. Now, he may want to leave the other one in, and if he does, I don't know that there's any to service this one, the third lot down there. There's nothing to prohibit if he wants to do that, but he'll pay a service fee.
There are several homes that have several water meters.
No wets, like a water share.
Yeah, wets, he's got a couple.
He's got three lots, and I don't, he has not combined them. And so he's using one water share for his orchard, the one that's down on the lower. I don't know whether he's using much on the, on the, the one that's up on Eagle Nest next to the home. On this water cost.
Yeah.
And there are no easements of those three lots? I mean, utility, nothing going between them?
If there is, those easements would
They'll be abandoned.
Ban then with a lot, but in reality now it's one lot, so the easements are still on the outside.
It just runs the perimeter of the big lot.
It's just one open middle of lots.
Yep. Between lot two and three, there's another paper here, says that "Existing lot line and easement that will be removed with the new plat." And so this, the plat that it shows no more easement there with that, between lots two and three.
I looked at that, but I don't remember, each of those is about an acre or?
It's a PUD up there. So it's total now of 2.1 acres.
Okay.
We're supposed to be
Both of the thousand oak lots are around three quarters of an acre, six tenths of three quarters.
Right, okay. There's a note here on, again, the secondary improvement plan, which things will, this is preliminary, so these are things that will need to be done before the final. But it says "An existing water meter and sewer line to be removed and capped at the property line for that third lot."
Okay.
So.
But if he wanted, he could still have that water meter.
Yeah, I don't see that if he didn't want, yeah, because like I say, the wets have done that. But then he would pay the regular meter charge for the shower waters being, being used there. So, okay, I take a motion on approving the preliminary plat, we call it Plat K for Thousand Oaks from Jeremy Broadbank.
I'll make a motion to approve Plat K in Thousand Oaks.
Okay, so I second?
I'll second it.
Mary, second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move now then to the items on the, the other items on the hearing, public hearing, the Title 11, and this has to do with the open space. First of all, adding a definition to open space and changing the verbiage for the, no, that's, that's in another section. Now let's just do, do the space definition. So have you not acquired as-bills before, or has the city not acquired as-bills before? We haven't. Seriously? And we haven't got, we've only, we haven't gotten, you know, we haven't followed up with them, and I This will solve that? Yep. That'll take care of that. Yeah, because sometimes they do change slightly, and it's good to have that data. Yeah. Super lines, water lines. Yeah, and there are many changes, there are here and there, so. Any questions on that?
On the as-bill?
On the as-bill?
Yeah, I have just a couple comments coming through.
Okay.
So, in the engineering world, as-bills kind of went away. We don't call them as-bills anymore, we call them record documents, but everyone still knows that an as-bill is. So I, I'm gonna promise that, the only has, it says requiring as-built construction, because that's really not defining what we're asking. I as-built documents, or usually you call them your as-built drawings, or your record drawings, or your record documents. I, I Asbill documents, or usually you call them your Asbill drawings, or your record drawings, or your record documents. Cause Asbill construction doesn't define what you're looking at.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Cause you're saying Asbill construction.
What, what we're saying is.
We want Asbill documents.
We did, we want the documents to document the construction, that's the intent.
Yeah, to document what happened during construction.
Okay.
For legal reasons, we gotta make them Asbills, we gotta have on record documents, but.
Okay, as you look at that definition and B, it says in red there, um, what would be better verbiage than, says as part of the final subdivision inspection process by the city engineers, any Asbill construction details?
I would call it just Asbill documents.
Any Asbill document details?
Documents. I would take that details, yeah. Cause details are gonna reference one part of the documents. The documents could include specifications, uh, drawings, plan views, details.
Okay, so any Asbill documents must be provided to the city, okay?
Yeah.
Um, question. What constitutes a change that would require an Asbill document?
Typically it comes to utilities, is where you see most of it, like someone, like they get out there and they, on their drawings, we do, cause we do these all the time. Every project we do, we do record documents. What happens is the contractor gets out there in the field, he gets building something and he's putting in a water line, he finds out, oh, shoot, something buried in irrigation box here years ago, we just found it, we don't want to move it, we're gonna move our line over by it. So what they'll do is they'll mark that on their drawings in the field, and then they take it back to the engineer.
And they'll change it.
And the engineer updates it, and then that's what gets submitted to the city, so they know where that actually, cause there's been a change from the design. So they document that, turn it back into the city at the end of construction, then the city has an accurate record of where everything is.
Basically, any change from the final plat.
Or construction documents.
That they, they're working on.
The reason I ask the question is, I was looking over my house plans, I just go through them, and one of the things I noticed that in the plans that the house was built upon, there was, um, island in the kitchen was a two level island. And we said, no, we don't want two levels, we want it just one. So there was a change from the original documents that were approved. But that require an Asbill, because, you know.
So this is just for subdivisions, right, not for homes?
Yes.
City doesn't keep that for homes.
Yeah, city wouldn't care about that change of the field, it's non-structural.
If it's a non, if it's structural, like the buildings.
Yeah, that's non-structural.
Now, there's a.
This just says subdivisions.
The utilities example you gave was when the house was under construction, not when the subdivision was being.
I'm talking like an eight inch water line that's feeding that subdivision.
Okay.
You know, cause when they turn in the subdivision plans, that's your roads, your public utilities, or your roads, your water. So any of that changes, they'll document it, cause those are, and the reason you're getting those is cause those are city maintained items. The city has to maintain those items, so, um.
And the city does not maintain Asbill.
They don't maintain Asbill, so anything.
We do it for a short period of time.
Yeah. I mean, like, why not?
But they're not responsible to go dig that water line up, or they're not responsible for your house or something, right? But if a water line breaks, they wanna know where that water line's at. So to have that accurate record document tells them where it's at and that it was moved.
Let me add to that.
It's a public facility.
If there is an inspection area, part of your house, and that, whatever it is that required inspection has been modified from the original plan, then that plan has to be amended to reflect that item that's inspected, that's now been installed differently or some way that's not according to plan.
Like the four way?
Yes.
Where the building inspector does the four way inspection. If something is different in that four way inspection than what was in the original plan, then they would require Asbills.
Amendment to that.
Amendment of Asbills, which they do after, if instructions over with?
They documented, so use it the way, now, we're talking about two different things.
Yeah.
This is talking about a subdivision, not a whole. This is what we're talking about over here.
Right.
So we're not talking about changes to homes or anything like that, so this is talking subdivisions, and normally they'll, like the way we do it when we have projects under construction, if they move something to fill, it doesn't warrant us going in and doing changes during design or during water building. They take a red marker or a red pencil and they draw it on there, this is where we put it in. They give it back to the engineer, he'll update it in the CAD file, and then print new plans, and that's what gets submitted to the city. So they have an accurate record where it's at. Anything they have to maintain.
Right.
Yeah, your home stuff, they're not gonna.
Your home stuff, that's separate.
That doesn't, this isn't referred to that.
This is, yeah, this is subdivision stuff.
This is the kind of stuff that we run into with Fujis a little bit.
Yeah, but.
With changers, but that, that's not.
That's not this part.
No, that's correct.
They're talking about.
That's correct.
Home stuff.
The structure of the house.
Yeah, and or grading and that sort of thing were changes or made that were not part of the original plan.
But really, in, in the same principle, it would seem to me would apply. I e, if something happened during the building of the house, the structure rechanged from the approved plan when it was permitted, then they need to submit a record document. But after the construction is over with.
I would even suggest they didn't have to change during, to get it reengineered.
So in the process, for instance, if you change something structural, they want an engineered copy of that change and stamped at that. For instance, the four way, if you change something, they want it then, they don't want that at the end of the house, they want it right then and now. At the time of the special.
Now, it's a matter of removing an island or something, you're not, they don't care about that.
Yeah.
As long as it's non-structural.
I just didn't want to be involved in that.
They don't care about that.
Wait.
Just a thought, um, it, it's probably implied, but you might wanna maybe specify in that definition, who's providing the Asbills to the city? Like, is it the developer?
It is the developer.
Yeah, I might have said developer, or the secretary.
It's part of the final subdivision inspection process by the city engineers. Any Asbill document must be provided to the city by the, maybe just concern by the developer.
By the developer.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Do we wanna say it's specified by the city building official or city engineer? Because I know where this came up is cause of the city engineer questioning why we weren't getting a point.
Yeah, I'm surprised that they were procuring Asbills, not the listed ones.
So I don't know about the building official, really, doesn't get it sometimes involved in the subdivision process. Public Works Director does.
He, he. Well, yeah.
Who happens to be the same guy, but.
Well, he doesn't go inspections though, the city engineers are the ones that have responsibility for inspection subdivision.
So if, when you go into other cities, typically you're submitting those to the city engineer or public works director, cause they're the ones that are responsible for the utilities. The building official is not responsible, they use it for the utilities. So using their.
Small city like ours, not working right there, it's also a building official.
Yeah, but at some point, that may change, so I just wondered if we wanna fix that now, say public works director or city engineer rather than building official. Cause if the city grows and those become two different people, which in most cities they are, you wanna go into the public works, not the city official or building official.
Now, let's just add, um, city engineers, you have building official.
Yeah, we can do that. Cause normally you wouldn't submit anything like that to a building official.
So you put, or city engineers?
Yeah, you wanna read that, it may be specified by the city building official or city engineers. Cause usually the building city engineers, they're the ones doing the inspection of, of the, um, the subdivision process, so.
Letter that's been.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Good, so, final to read, as part of the final subdivision inspection process by the city engineers, any Asbill document must be provided to the city by the developer, by the way of drawings or final plat amendments, or engineers' drawings, or otherwise, as may be specified by the city building official or city engineer. Does that sound acceptable to everybody?
Did you have document or documents?
Um.
Asbill documents? Is it plural?
I make a plural.
Yeah, cause there could be several lines depending.
Good, thank you. This says documents. Okay, I'll take a motion on that particular change.
I move that we approve the change to eleven dash four dash nine E. As red.
Okay.
As, yeah, as.
As red.
As red.
And A, all right. Is there a second?
I'll second it up.
Okay. All in favor?
Wait a minute.
Okay.
John, John has.
You need to do A and B, I think you just said B.
You did.
I did.
You need to do A and B.
I guess I have a few, we did a change, when then, yeah, A and B.
Official can. Okay. Um.
Who seconded that?
Lori did. So any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, thank you, pass. We're adding a new definition for open space, proposed. And it would read, an area generally set aside in a subdivision for public use, including but not limited to parks, recreation, hiking, and bicycle trails, ponds, or other non-residential facilities to enhance the community and provide an open space living environment in the surrounding areas. We don't have a definition, and that would be the new definition that we will incorporate into our definitions in Title XI. Any comments or thoughts on that?
Did we have that somewhere?
Did we have what?
Did we have that written somewhere?
Oh, it's on that, it's on your agenda.
I just talked about it before I got here.
Yeah, that's true.
I'm sorry, it was my wife's birthday today.
Oh gee, really?
It was like this.
You could have gotten excused, cause John's there.
Nope, cause Evan's here.
That's, that's an excusable.
Oh, happy birthday, I'm not much of a social media guy, so I never respond to pretty stuff, until we get.
Unless, unless you read the group name.
Yeah, I read it, I, I don't respond much, except for the monthly where we have to respond for the emergency thing, but. So no one's banging on my door every day when I'm in the world.
In, in the public statement that we received from a resident, they're, they're concerned about, the hillside development standards not being in both places.
We get to that, we're not to that yet.
Oh, but that's what we just read, it's hillside.
No, we're doing one A.
One A, it's what we're saying. So we skipped C?
We have, we have.
We did do C. We went to B first.
We went to B and now come back to A.
Went to the Asbill, but I went, I came back now to open space.
One A. Up on, up on.
I, I with you.
Okay, sorry about that, confusion. No further comment, I'll take a motion to, yeah?
I, I have a comment.
Sure.
I mean, to me, this just makes so much sense to define open space. Uh, so this understanding, the way I characterize it, that's out there in the community, makes absolutely no sense to me, because they're talking about anything between the building and the property line needs to be undisturbed open space. There is not any house in this community that is that way, because our requirements require them to have a two percent grade for twelve feet beyond the building. How can you do that undisturbed?
You can't.
You can't. You have to disturb the environment. Anybody that has, like my house, has a, my driveway that goes down the side of my house.
Yeah.
To my shop in the back. It's not undisturbed.
Yep. I couldn't agree more.
Anyway, I just wanna be on record to say that.
Very good. Okay, so for a new definition of open space, I'll take a motion to approve that, for the council.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve the definition of open space.
Okay.
Do I need to read it all?
No.
Okay.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mary, I'll put you down as the second.
Yeah, L and L.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Wait, you had to jump on me again, sorry. I was wondering why, and maybe I'll explain real quick, and carrying on the, why would you, cause a while back in the engineering world, we changed from Asbill to record drawings, I was wondering, I think about why did we do that, so I just looked up. Asbill drawing is something the contractor keeps on site, so when he changes something, he red marks it on there, and that's an Asbill drawing. So what he, we'd be getting, this, what we'd be getting from the developer would be a set of drawings that have red lines on, from the contractor. A record drawing is they take those Asbills and they give them to the architect or engineer, he changes it in the CAD file, and then those get sent to the city as the final record drawings.
I just think we had a lot of funness.
That's why, cause I know in our world, we used to call them Asbills years ago, and then probably ten years ago, we had to start using record drawings instead of Asbills, and I just, I couldn't remember why, but that was why. So an Asbill is something we would get, so what, by, the same Asbill, and I only think of this because of some people in our communities that look up definitions and like to give us exact definitions.
You need to know about it?
If we asking for an Asbill, the developer could take what the contractor did in the field with his red pencil and hand it to us, and say, there's your Asbill. Whereas if we ask for a record drawing, they, developer, I'm sorry, I have.
That's okay.
General standard. I've gotta take those red marked drawings from the contractor, give them to their engineer, who updates it in the CAD file, prints new drawings, and stamps record drawing on, cause that's what we do, is we stamp record drawing on, and then they give that to us.
Would it be appropriate, just so that there's a full understanding to say Asbill record documents? Or do you think we oughta take Asbill out of it altogether?
I would.
I would, I would say record, cause like I said, we don't use Asbill anywhere in the engineering world.
We, we hear it all the time.
I know.
And that's what I hear too, is what I do.
Contractors use Asbill all the time, cause that's what they're doing. But if that's what we want, that's fine.
No, I think we want the, we want the record drawing.
We want the record drawings, so I would suggest changing it to record drawing, and then the engineer has to stamp on their record drawings. Now, there are gonna be a caveat, cause we always do say, you know, we're relying on others, meaning the contractor.
We're relying on the Asbill.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we always do, but then we're getting a final set that are CAD, not red lines all over them.
Okay, I understand. Um, any motion, no, any motion to change that, to remove Asbill and just call it any record documents? Or do you wanna what, record drawings? Of course, we identified what they are, but record documents.
Yeah, record documents. Call it Ted, help me, Nashville. I, I didn't know if I could make the motion, so I can, I'll make the motion.
Okay. To amend.
To amend, Asbill, your record.
Read that first sentence for us.
So as part of the final subdivision inspection process by the city engineer, any record documents must be provided to the city by the developer, by the way of drawings or final plat amendments, or engineers' drawings, or otherwise, as may be specified by the city building official or city engineers. Okay?
I'll second now.
All right. Thanks for pointing that out, I think it's a good distinction to make.
Yeah, I was gonna let it go, but I, I think, well, some people would like to look, instead of.
Careful, we're trying to be up to date, we won't be ten years behind.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like I said, we have called Asbills for years.
Yeah, I still do.
In contractors in the field, that's what they're doing, that's what they call Asbills, but when we have to update them and give them to the owner, we call them, we stamp on those record drawings.
Okay. Uh, go on to one C, and this is the hillside development. And this is the hillside development. Where this would, uh, this one page that we took out of the, uh, development construction standards relating to hillside development. We would, we would remove it from the subdivision chapter and leave it in its entirety as it is now in the development and construction standards for subdivisions. Any comments or? Larry, you, you were making a.
Well, I just.
Comment or question about?
Right.
Where we were at with our project here. Any thoughts?
Well, they, they indicate that the, the appeal authority is currently there to be maintained and I don't see a problem with that. I mean, it's there, right?
Appeal authority doesn't have anything to do with this.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not even.
They, they make a number of, series of, uh, comments. So. But they did make a comment about this, felt that.
Right.
Stay.
Okay.
What they've been doing. So. Any other thoughts? Okay, I'll take a motion to, uh, recommend this to city council.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
To recommend to city council.
Lori made a motion. Any second to that?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Just to clarify, we're not changing it or are we?
Not changing it, it's just where it's at.
Basically where it's at. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, thank you. We've kind of, well. We're going to part of the, now we're in Title X. With the definitions of, um, front, yard front, yard rear, and yard side. And it would be to change the wording from open space to area in each of those instances. Using the word area to, to help define the area that's, uh, that's intended in reference.
I move that we, uh, amend those definitions for, uh, front and rear and side.
Can I have one question before? What is the purpose or the intended purpose of unobstructed from the ground upward?
I also say that question. Worth you put a shit.
Yeah.
In your rear yard.
Yeah.
Well, is that obstruction?
It is.
An accessory building has to be twenty feet away from the main building.
But is that your rear yard?
It can be.
Okay, in the rear yard, you can be in. So, so, so.
Unobstructed from the ground.
This is unobstructed from the ground up.
Except that area is specified.
This is just a definition of the yard.
You want to put a playground equipment there or whatever. It is, then, then you can do that.
So the rest of the title specifies what can go in there.
Okay.
Yeah, really anything. You can put a driveway up beside your house or.
I mean, uh. I, I'm assuming, you know, I didn't look, I'm not sure about. I'm assuming that somewhere in ten, it talks about what the instructions are.
It doesn't.
It doesn't.
So your rest of your title would govern whatever, whatever the title says, if there's any restriction or if there's not.
Well, what we say, from the ground upward exempt as hereafter specified. So is it specified?
No.
Now, why do we say hereafter specified?
Because you can put anything. Anything that is allowable can go there. And generally, if it's not allowable, it's specified. But it can be specified. If it's not exempt from the ordinance, if the ordinance says you can't put it there, then you can.
I mean, for instance, accessory building, you couldn't put it in the side yard.
Sure you could, if you're within a setback.
Fine, it has to be twenty feet away from the building.
Yes.
And.
Five feet from the property line.
So it could be five feet wide. Even in, in R1 or R2, the setback is thirty feet. Okay, and if it's five feet from, it has to be twenty feet from the house, five feet from the property line. That means you can build the building five feet wide.
Should have gotten bigger than that.
If, if you've matched that yourself.
If, if you're, yeah. When, you know, if you're thirty feet away from the property line.
That's the way it is.
So you could put one there, but it can only be five feet wide.
Yeah.
All right.
Why not for a snowblower going?
Snowblower should.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. It seems. Do, do we need that? Except as hereafter specified.
No. The only point, I guess my thought is, you're trying to minimize.
They were not changing.
Changing one word.
Right.
Right.
They were just changing the one word from what's on there to keep it.
I found that easier work with, with the city council. You know?
That's, that's.
Minimize the word changes and leave it the way it is with whatever specific word change we need to make.
Okay.
And that's primarily.
I think that one word change is a good change.
It is.
No.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Any, any motion there?
I have a motion.
Larry, that's right. Okay. Is there a second?
A second, uh.
All right. All in, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well, thank you. Item number three. Development and construction standards changed. The name changed to development and construction standards for subdivisions. Comments, thoughts?
I like changing it because I think in previously, there's been confusion and people try to apply it to their individual homes, appropriately. And typically in every city I've ever worked in, their construction and development standards apply to develop, not an individual house. And I know there's been homeowners who have tried to apply them in their house at fault of the city. And it's not really their intent.
I've looked at Salem's and Salem's develop, uh, development and construction standards stand by themselves. They don't make any reference to subdivision or anything. They just out there by themselves. But as you look through them, they're, they pertain to infrastructure development as a subdivision.
And that's typically when they're built, they're there because the city has certain preferences and likes and how they, because they have ultimately, generally what they typically apply to is in pretty much every city I've ever worked in is whatever the city is taking from that development, whatever, they're going to be responsible, roads, water lines, sewers, whatever, becomes a public facility is what is governed in those construction standards. And because they want to determine, they have certain things they want to see, how they want to see it built. When it comes to a house, that's, that's your building code, your IBC, your.
That, that is going to be my question. Do you like, international building code is applied with subdivision?
No.
It's really old construction, house construction.
The house construction. That's where your ordinances and building code come in, and that's where individual house construction. Development standards are just that, they're mandatory.
Now, as a side note to add to what Ted said a little bit, Summer Creek is going to likely come to us requesting private roads and so forth in part of their development. In the development agreement itself, it indicates, even though those won't be turned over to the city, that those have to be built according to the standards that the city has. So.
As far as roads and utilities?
Ev- everything is covered in development construction standards that they'll be doing has to be done according to those standards.
Sure.
So. Any other questions about that? Okay. Take a motion to approve that, name change?
I move that we change the city development and construction standards to city development and construction standards for subdivisions.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, Ted's second. Any further discussion? All in favor making that change?
Aye.
Any opposed? Very well. Okay, thank you. Takes care of those public hearing matters. Okay, next. Item on agenda is the city fencing ordinance. I sent everybody a copy of a, of a write-up that Severn did some time ago. And this analysis that he did on that. So Severn, do you want to, do you want to lead out our discussion?
Sure. As, as you are aware, the city council still doesn't like what we did with fencing ordinance. And so, uh, Wayne and I talked about it a little bit, then I decided to go through and actually look at all parts of the fencing ordinance as it now exists. And there is, are basically, uh, B and C parts of the fencing ordinance are the two critical parts. And then C really applies right now only to Four Seasons. And that's the only pure R119 we have, right?
With no overlay?
Yeah.
Yes.
That's why I said pure R119. And so it really applies to Four Seasons. And there, to me, there are a lot of things in the B part which covers the rest of Woodland Hills that has information that, that's not part of C. And then I think ought to be part of C, and that's the write-up that I did was relevant, to point out those things. For instance, C doesn't say anything about the type of fence. It says what you can have, but it doesn't say what you can't have. It doesn't say anything about the color. Whereas B talks about color, it talks about approved materials, it talks about non-approved materials. And so there's just a lot in B that is just not part of C. And so my proposal basically is that we ought to merge the two together. The big thing that is different between B and C is that C, we are allowing vision restricted fences. Whereas in B, it's got to be seventy-five percent open. Whenever we cut up the fence in B. Anyway, that's, that's a quick adjournment.
Is there a reason why C wasn't, or why it wasn't, B wasn't carried all the way over?
Or are we making?
Well, part of it was because we wanted to let Four Seasons put it on the property line and have vision restricted fences.
So is there a reason why we just didn't take and say, everything from B is carried over here except for these three exceptions?
And that's, and that's basically what my proposal is.
I mean, let, let's dumb it down and simplify it.
Well, we thought though too that, I mean, I know, I, I don't know if any of you were on plan commission when the city passed this other fencing ordinance. It was, it was a nightmare. It went on for several years.
I have no doubt.
In trying to get it through and pass. And so one thought that I had in my mind with the R119 fencing ordinance, knowing what trouble there had had in, in the, in the B part, is to craft a separate ordinance down there. They had made requests for us, Robert Nelson had made a request for different fencing criteria than the rest of the city had. Which I can understand, there was, there were some issues there. So rather than trying to go through and put it into a single ordinance and merge it some way and clarify this pertains to this and this pertains to that, I thought it would just be easier to craft the own ordinance for that area of the city and not connect it with the rest.
So what kind of ordinance is Summer Creek?
They're under everything, the fencing ordinance, the standard fencing ordinance that we have, except for C. So there'd be.
It applies to Summer.
No exceptions?
No exceptions.
Okay, so there's, they didn't ask for different things, it's the same application?
No, we, we didn't even ask them.
Ours are more strict than yours. We, we allow less than you guys do.
So as you have some CCRs that, that are more strict.
That's right.
For the city. So that's how that issue's solved there then.
Yeah.
So we don't even address CCRs?
Yeah, I know we don't, so. But they've taken that to govern themselves, yeah.
So that's some of the baggage.
Yeah.
Now, the, the only hiccup that, I, I see, I, and correct me Severn, if you think there was more than this. The only hiccup with the other ordinance seemed to be the corner lot issue with the, uh, fence on the property line or where it goes on the corner lot. That seemed to be the main, um, reservation that the city council, that they did feel that was clearly defined enough with, with how it was stated. Is that what you're feeling?
Well, I certainly think that's why, why one council member voted against it. Two voted for it, three voted against it.
Okay.
One that voted against it, the issue that she had was she had gotten feedback from residents saying they wanted it thirty feet back from any stream. So any corner lot, you've got to be back thirty feet from each side. And the last time we did it, we allowed them to put it on the property line for the side yard.
Not front yard, but side yard.
Up to the front plane of the house, that's the way.
Could go beyond the front plane of the house. Uh, and I, I'm not sure why the other two city council members voted against it. I, I, I don't know that I remember them saying specifically. I know that Carrie said that, that she, she wanted it thirty feet back on a corner lot on both the front and the side.
It seems like I recall what I'm saying, that they just felt the wording was not clear enough in part.
Well, I, I, I bet Sam. I, I, I bet they voted for it. But one of the things that Ben said is, you need to better define the front of the house. I mean, really? The front of the house is where the front door is. How much simpler can it be? I mean, you can face your neighbor, you can face the road. There are a couple of houses in Thousand Oaks where the front door faces the rear.
Yeah, can I bring that up? My house that was just built last year behind me, their front door is in the backyard and it's slightly tilted, so it literally faces my house. It's completely behind me and then Otley's old house, okay? But that house was built completely with the front door facing us.
Is there address, an Eagle Nest address?
No, it's Lofer. Their backyard is what faces Lofer and their front yard is my backyard.
Well, I, I think people have thought that the front of the house is the part that faces the street.
Yes, but, but.
But it's not. Yeah, it's not.
But if, if that definition were to be applied in that house behind me.
Technically it could be on.
Front yard is a backyard, their backyard is a front.
So they could build a fence all the way to Lofer.
I wonder what their front yard setback and rear yard setback, how that's been defined, given that situation, if that got reversed.
It's too close to Otley's and too close to my house and I had a very heated discussion recorded when, when it was happening.
So technically, if the front of their house is the front door, they could build a fence. Although they can't build a fence.
On their backyard.
The backyard.
They can't build a fence back there.
But they can build them all the way to Lofer.
Because that's their backyard.
That's their backyard.
Yeah.
And along Lofer.
Well, no. Because the ordinance says it has to be thirty feet away from the road. Doesn't it? Doesn't it?
So they said thirty feet back. So they could come all the way out to thirty feet from Lofer and then cut it off.
These guys shoved their house right up to the middle one than they could in the back and put all their... street yard, I don't even know what to call it. They maximized their street yard from the street and minimized their, what would normally be the backyard.
Well, and, and normally the backyard's thirty, at least thirty feet.
It's, it's thirty feet buried off the rear property line.
Yeah.
And so the front yard is fifty feet.
It's everything that's left.
So did they reverse it, then?
The house was flipped a hundred and eighty degrees.
But the setbacks, do you know if they were reversed?
It's fifty feet from the road.
Yeah, setbacks stayed the same, but that was where some of the issue was, that's all of the conversation.
Okay.
Because they held it tight to the fifteen, tight to the thirty in the back and then just left everything else. But their front door faces my back.
I mean, the I-birds.
And some, some of them are turned sideways.
Diagonally.
Yeah, slightly diagonally you can work with. A hundred and eighty degree block.
Jimmy Bravon rings this kind of diagonally too.
Yeah, because he's on a corner, yeah, yeah. You get some of these homes where they're turning them sideways, but they're trying to cap to, capture the views.
Views, yeah.
And that's why the one behind me did it, is their master bedroom's on the street side, which would normally would have been the rear of the house, so that they can have that view up towards the lake. But that, I, I guess I'm just saying is, you need to have those definitions clear enough so that you don't get fences built where you didn't think you were gonna get fences built.
Well, and some of that comes then in the subdivision plat, where the front yard's identified setback, and rear yard's identified, if they want to turn their house around, that is to change the setbacks, you know?
And here I don't think the setbacks changed, but your definition of fence placement could
Yeah.
Be impacted if it doesn't specify from the street, from this, from that, so, yeah.
And, and the way that house sits that you were talking about, and you and I talked about this a little bit, they couldn't have a fence in the backyard, because that's the front of the house and you can't go beyond the front plane of the house. And their backyard, the fence has to be thirty feet away from the road. So they've got maybe twenty feet between the house and where they can put the fence.
Yeah.
Somebody's putting fences up over that house.
Jeremy Bravon, he solves his problems, turns his house around.
Well, this is a little bit of a dangle.
What's that?
He didn't solve it that way.
I said, that's how he could, he just turned his house around, then he could build his fence back there.
That's a little bit like, turn his house around. Oh, he, he still can't build it. If he turned his house so the front door was facing Eagle Nest.
No, I didn't say turn it, so faces that house.
So it faces west.
So faces east-ish.
He said it faces east.
East, north.
So it's face, so he's looking at John Stouts, who knew, for his front door. So his backyard's on Eagle Nest. So his, so his backyard's on Eagle Nest.
Maybe with his house.
Turn his house, so his backyard is Eagle Nest, then he can build that fence. As long as he's thirty feet back from the road. As long as he's thirty feet off the road.
Oh, you can do it thirty feet off the road, and if you look at his lot, the thirty feet back, all that is, is underbrush and trees. And so his lawn, his side yard and his backyard, he can enclose his whole backyard within that thirty feet back.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see, I guess, if it's addressed, so. Any other thoughts?
I mean, I, I think Wayne's got a good point, you know? He would try to address this with the city council. I still don't like the fact that we are essentially creating that ten-foot no-man line, no-man's land between two people.
Yeah, I disagree, we had to agree with that.
Yeah, that is not wise. Well, that's, that was the whole purpose.
That's kind of what started it.
Started the whole thing, was to do away with that. Now, I've read, I've read Salos, one of their fence ordinances, and they address it like, they don't put a restriction on it other than it, it can't be a vision barrier to oncoming traffic. And they leave it at that, and that that will be inspected at the time the fence is done, to make sure that there's no vision impairment.
And that's what we did for Four Seasons.
Is that, was that?
It says.
Is that right?
Yeah. It says no vision barrier.
The problem is, is the person who built the fence wants to know where those parameters are before they put the fence in.
And it could be done with a simple diagram, really easy diagram. I think I sent out a recommendation.
I remember seeing, yeah.
It got shut down, but, so when we do, ever design, when we design, we don't do individual houses, we do sound walls and stuff like that on roads. And when every day you have to calculate your site distance, which is a very simple diagram, especially here because you only got two speed limits, in theory, twenty-five, thirty-five.
Actually you have two, yeah. It's thirty down Summit Creek, thirty-five down Woodland Hills Drive.
Well, that's right, change your redness. So you ask three for thirty-five, but you do it in a simple. And you basically say, this is your site triangle, you cannot, if you ever drew your subdivisions and you see when someone's got a corner, side and rear, the fence is on forty-five, that's what that is, that's a site triangle. And most cities, when someone comes in to build a fence like that, or commit process, they have to calculate what that triangle is and keep any obstructions out of that site triangle, it's based on speed of the vehicle that would be coming down the road. So the, the idea is that this person stopped at either stop sign or stop bar, okay? And vehicles coming down the road, keep or pull out, this guy has enough time to stop, right? He can see this guy pull out, has enough time to stop, that's a site distance basically, which includes slow, speed and rate. Anyway, so that triangle starts at this stop sign, and it basically goes up so many feet, over so many feet, and then just rather triangle again, beginning in that triangle. Really simple diagram, three speed limits, and you basically can say, this is where your fence cannot obstruct on any corner. Now, that only applies to a corner.
And the way in the R-119 says, vision barrier fences are permitted, providing they do not interfere with the safety of motorist, bicycle or pedestrian traffic. The side location may be inspected by the city at any time to ensure this requirement is followed.
And that was always my question, what is that requirement? Who determines it?
The city.
So how does the city determine? So basically. So basically the homeowner is subject to whatever the city decides is.
That's pretty much it. That's pretty much it.
Writing a simple diagram.
But I think that, I, I seen that too, that diagram.
The one I sent out in emails, a much more complicated one than we would need, that was just an example out of a book, but you could do something that's very simple, just say you just can't have a fence here.
Well, put that in the ordinance, you know, that triangle.
Or just say the homeowner has to calculate the site distance triangle and present that on a site land of the city as part of the requirement of the fence, if they want a fence. Look, then calculate it.
And it only pertains to corner lots? Or street, street side, street side lots?
Street side lots, and they're only pertaining to those who have a side yard on the street side, because if it's a front yard, they can't have a fence either, right? So it's only those that have a side, which is going to be very few in this city, but... And we just make them calculate the site triangle. Then you're, because that's it. Ashdod, American, state highway transportation officials, back in society. It's what we used to do road designs, then you guys have to fall back on.
So what's our approach here?
So any thoughts, any other thoughts? I, I have, I have some reservations about, I mean, I, for these changes, maybe all of them that Severn has identified here, I think are, they're good, but I, I just question at this time of being able to get the city council to agree to, maybe, you know, maybe pick and choose one or two, I don't know. But I just think if we try to combine it overall to, to accomplish the, the, doing away with the five foot.
So is the biggest concern that five foot from the property line? Yeah, so is there any reason why that just can't be addressed purely, is that one item?
No, we can do that and we can look at the others in, in the future and.
And then work the other down the road.
Yeah.
Let's do that, because that's a big issue, having that type that happen, people are moving in and ready to do fences, I'm sure.
Well, we, we could, we could, we could advise it, and if, you know, if we feel that this one, part five of the R-119, if that would be a good way, but to enlarge upon that with, with a safety diagram or the triangle diagram, that, that has to be used to identify the, the safety areas of, of that and use that instead of a thirty-foot setback on that roadside, we could incorporate that.
And maybe those triangles extend more than thirty feet both ways?
They could, it just depends on what, I mean.
Based on those speed limits?
It probably wouldn't, in our city. Because it's only, Summit Creek could be the main one you deal with right now, it's just thirty miles an hour, and it wouldn't, it's, it's pretty mean on a diagram.
It's kind of, but this is only applied to Four Seasons currently, right?
Yep.
The C?
C, yes.
No, but this, what we're proposing is a change for the whole city to get rid of this five-foot difference.
Oh, so you want that to apply to everything, not just Four Seasons?
Correct. Four Seasons could do it now, they could do it on the property line.
Oh, okay.
In Four Seasons, with the, with the ordinance that we passed a year or so ago.
Oh, so you're wanting to change it to the rest of the city?
To the rest of the city, to allow, yeah.
And what, I think my recommendation really is what's in five, says we could modify ten dash eleven eight, B one E, as in four above, which says modify it where fences or hedges taller than forty-two inches shall not be located less than thirty feet from a property line or running a stream. A fence may be placed on the property line, provided there, I cannot cut this off.
Says nothing in the current ordinance restricts fences beyond the front plane of the house. Is that where, and then it says?
Yeah, the front plane of the house is where, the front of the house is located. The front, then, then that parenthesis is what I.
This is what we recommended, modifying that the city, city council wrote it down.
And then. I know why, I think I've got an iPad and I can.
But to maybe modify that, and I, I don't remember anything, and that's what stands out of my mind with our objection.
The other, the other, in C, it says that this, basically it says this answer will be set, section B seven, eight, nine. And my suggestion is to say.
Six, seven and eight.
Six, seven and eight, yeah. Which is to permit construction and if they've got a non-conforming fence, like I have a non-conforming fence around my garden, because it's only three feet from the property line instead of five. But as long as, since it was built before the fencing ordinance.
Grandfathered in.
It's grandfathered in, and as long as I keep it maintained, I don't have to move it. Anyway, and, and instead saying all other requirements contained in ten, eleven dash eight be applied, except is modified by C. And so the color, the type, all those other things that are part of the, applying to C, plus you can put it on the property line and you can have a vision barrier fence, which you still can't have up here. Still has to be seventy-five percent open.
We will likely need to go have that public hearing on this again, which is fine, but... Anyway. Should we give it another try?
Give it a go.
It's only been in the works for six years.
That's another six. Like an elephant? Just keep chewing ass.
I, I think, I think the idea of not having setbacks between, on sides, between neighbors is excellent. I mean, that standard, that standard through most communities, two neighbors get together and build a fence on their property line so they can maintain.
And you're, while the city have to maintain all that.
That ten foot.
Ten foot open area.
Right.
Because in, in theory, that's the easier, that's the city's easier, but.
Well, let's, I mean, let me, what do you think of this approach? I'll, I'll put myself on their, on their work agenda and with the recommendation that we, we focus on that one area, the five-foot elimination of that, and, and see what the city council says.
Yep, let's do it.
And, and we can go from there and, and look at what they say, if there's other sections that they're disagreeing with, then they can verbalize that, you can further talk about it, but if not, then craft some language there to just deal with that area.
One thought that I had, if we were going to go forward with some of the stuff that I recommended, is that I would send a copy of this analysis that I had to the city council so they could better understand the overall concern that we have in terms of the two different parts of that ordinance.
But they knew that when we passed that.
No, they didn't know.
When we passed C, when we passed C, they knew, that was a standalone ordinance for Four Seasons.
I understand, but they did not understand that there, that there were things that were required up here, they're not even addressed.
Oh, I think they did.
By talent.
I don't think they did, Wayne, I, I don't think they correlated the two.
Did you, do you think they, well, C is certainly not part of everything else.
Right.
Because a lot of stuff is not gerained to, to the R-119.
Right.
So they knew that those weren't being merged as part of our fencing.
But I don't think that they understood that material, what the fence is can be made out of, is not addressed in C, and that the color was not addressed in C.
Well, the material they did, because there was a guy here who spoke up about vinyl, that he felt that, oh, did we include it or not?
Well, vinyl is in C.
Yeah.
But vinyl is in.
And, and, because even, even.
It's in one, vinyl. Vinyl's in B. Yes.
Okay.
Now, how you do vinyl and have it seventy-five percent open, I don't know, but it's in B. You can do vinyl that.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm, I'm just, I'm.
I mean, that's fine, Wayne.
I, let, let's do that at a later time. I'm concerned that.
Just work on the vinyl right now.
Yeah.
And, and these other things.
Take this one chunk at a time.
And it'll get, it'll get overlooked.
Not overlooked, not, not overlooked.
But let's keep that, and then as we, if we get through this one part, then, then let's look at the rest of, of, of B. So is there, everybody can sense us on that? Take that approach?
Yep.
Sounds good.
Okay.
I know.
Okay.
I'm gonna take the whole file.
We can do this and then we can do the rest.
And they'll, they'll get on all these other things, which are not bad ideas, that's where the focus will be, and then, and will be months and months before we get through that and, and, eliminating that.
I don't think you're gonna have any more luck with them, with just dealing with what you wanna deal with. Somebody's not gonna like it, Dan won't like it, he didn't think of it, it's just somebody won't like it.
You only need three.
Maybe it's like, whenever we go, you know, get funding for meetings, maybe we try to do some politics on the creepy holiday.
That's why I suggested that we send the analysis to them, so that they better understand the conflicts that are inherent with the way that the ordinance is written now.
Let's do that next month, after they pass the five foot.
Yeah, I think that all these can be dealt with, but I think you get the five foot down there now, and then for everything else.
Okay. Uh, next item.
Well, we, we gotta approve this.
Is that?
If you're gonna take it, we gotta have a vote.
Okay. The vote is then to hold on to Severance analysis that he's done here and, uh, I'm gonna, I'm not, I'm not gonna propose any ordinance to them other than what if we make the change to that one part of, of the, uh, vision barrier and incorporate, uh, a triangle in that process. And we can work on that, show them what that is based upon speed and would they be willing to accept that? If they're not, then there's no point in us going to the rest of the motion to redraft a whole.
That, that makes no sense, Wayne. Efficient barrier only applies down in four seasons.
No, it doesn't.
Yes.
Not if we're gonna allow fences on the property line anywhere in the city.
But seventy-five percent open is not efficient barrier sent, yes.
Well, I'm, I'm misstating.
If it's over six feet, it's typically not allowed.
Yeah.
Even whether it's open or not.
Cause it interferes with the.
Usually it has to be now. Like some cities, you can still do fence to the property along the corner after the front. You just have to keep it the old thirty-six inches.
Well, for us, it's forty-two.
So I was on a corner of the river, that's why I had to drop mine down to thirty-six to go. I was on a corner, all the way down.
Salem's is thirty-six, but ours is forty-two. But right now, they can do that in R one nineteen, just can't do it in the rest of the city.
Well, they can't, they can't do it past the foot of the house though.
No, that's right. But the, what I'm proposing is to test the wires.
Well, what I think I understood when you were gonna test the water line was putting it on the property line.
That's right.
And not like former law. You know you're gonna get a vote against the former law.
That's where we got the problem, that's where we got.
Well, that's where Kerry voted.
Well, that, and that's what I wanna see, what, if we do this bit, this triangle and that's the standard, and that's an adopted with the lot, then is that, is that?
Well.
Are you gonna object to that too?
Well, I don't, I don't think you should say anything about efficient barrier fence.
Well, okay, I misspoke there, we're, we're not, we're just talking about a, a fence, a fence that interferes with vision.
With the triangle.
That interferes with the vision.
Right.
Regardless, not a barrier, but any fence gonna interfere with the vision of the street, we incorporate this triangle feature in it and see if they're, they're acceptable to that.
I think we're gonna need ten cell to define how you measure that triangle.
Well, yeah, we can, we can do that.
I actually got an example on my computer, I did one up for our city.
And are you also willing to bring the five foot?
And just go on the property line, which is with the five foot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was two issues really.
To, to the extent, I mean, it can go on the property line to the extent of the triangle.
Right.
Yeah. And if there's still problems with that, then we might as well give up and go home. But hopefully it would be somewhat well received and open.
Cause property line's still usually what about twenty feet past the curb? Or given our right of way.
Ten, enter ten, isn't it? Well, it depends, depends on the street.
Depends on the street.
Most of our right of ways up here fifty-six, I don't know what they're.
Right, they're fifty, a lot of here. And it's.
Fifty-six is newer stuff, fifty-eight.
Probably fifteen, you know, or fifty-six up here, cause I'm pretty sure it's fifty-six in Thousand Oaks.
Yep.
But down in R one nineteen, I don't know what.
It's fifty.
Fifteen, R one nineteen.
Yeah.
So if your road's twenty-five, so you got twelve feet either side, it's like that to the property line.
Yeah. Twenty-five feet out.
Well, I think, I think sixteen, that means fifteen?
Well, it's a fifty foot right of way, your road's twenty-five feet wide. And you've got another twenty-five feet.
Split.
Split, two sides.
Twelve.
About twelve and a half each side. It's just pretty long.
I'll show you. If you have my survey, please, I invite them to come up, just go fifteen feet back from the edge of the asphalt. Which is the same right of way.
Depending on the road, some roads go right next to, they're twenty feet, twenty-five.
Who's the asphalt's twenty-five feet?
Just a quick diagram, and this is around the scale, I didn't give that much time. If your right of way's fifty feet and your road is twenty-five, that means you got twelve and a half each side to make up the fifty from the road over to the property line.
And so that's the bar, yeah, some of that's the wrong ditch.
And the road's only twenty-five feet.
Probably, and they're usually twelve foot lanes, left of the twelve foot lanes.
City right of way goes way past the asphalt.
Yeah. And they could be, if they're left of lanes, it could be even, but by the time you put in the curb getter, then you're usually twenty-two to plus five, what's that, twenty-seven, so it might be a little less than twelve.
Most residential, it's traditional, it's usually ten feet, Mac curve for the property line. You don't have that here, it's different.
So is Kerry's concern, she wanted it all thirty?
Yeah.
The long ways.
Yeah, I remember, is that the number she?
Especially if that setbacks, but off a road's fifty or thirty, depending on the side of the farm, I guess. It's thirty, and then there face could be a side of the house, I mean, there is no bad thing put up.
That doesn't make any difference with the triangle, does it?
Mm-hmm. Triangle, you just put on the property line and you build your side triangle.
Okay. Uh.
Similarly, if you ride down Salem and you're ready to go up the new elementary across the street, you see that sound fence right there and then you get the curb getter, the sidewalk, and then that fence all that's right on the property line. City could call it right of way line.
Uh, item fifteen, so I don't think we need to vote on that. I'm just gonna try to feel the city council out and see what they, which way they're gonna go on. If, if there's a, if there's a vote to present this whole thing, I'm, I'm, I'm open, I don't, I'm open to it, but I don't, I think we'll get one down.
All I'm asking is that we vote on what you think was your proposal to the city council. I don't think you have independent authority to do that without our approval.
Okay.
So they're just talking about not presenting a proposal, right, just because of them?
Yeah. Is there?
Or do we vote to give you a question?
Okay, let's take a motion, I'm, I'm fine with that. If we want to take those, those two areas to a council work session to feel a amount on it. The one is the five foot, uh, to build, to put a fence on the property line. And secondly, to make the restriction on that, uh, commensurate with the, the triangle, uh, that would be used to identify the area of vision. Those in favor of doing that?
Now, you call that a side distance triangle?
Yeah, side triangle.
Side triangle.
Okay, those in favor of doing that, let, let me do the, the motion. Is there a motion to do that? Okay? Is there a motion, yes, to take that approach? Is there a second to that?
All seconded.
Okay. You want a second? Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of taking that approach? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
We endorse, we vote against things.
Opposition, all things are good.
Very well. Uh, item fifteen, last time we were together, there were three of us and, um, some creek had made a request to change some setbacks on some of their lots from fifty feet to thirty feet. Our subdivision ordinance allows the planning commission to make that determination and probably likely during the subdivision approval process for a PED. There's, we received at least one inquiry from a private party who wants to change that to his lot, to give himself a thirty foot setback in front. And primarily is to give him more building space, uh, more, more building envelope to put their home. Some of these lots, uh, fall off on the back and have some, some limited, uh, area, uh, for which they can build. And, um, I don't think I handed this sheet out back then to the three of us who were here. I overlooked it, but I sent to, to all of you and it's color coded with a red with eighteen lots that are all by some creek in there that they would like to apply. Can you see that one? Yeah. Uh, to apply the thirty foot setback to those lots that are not built on. A few of the lots have been built on with a fifty foot, yeah, fifty foot setback. So those are, those are done. Um, there may be some other owners in there who have these lots who, who at this point aren't part of that. And I don't know whether they would want, I don't know how, why they would object to having a thirty foot instead of a fifty. So Ben, all these are currently fifty foot front?
If that's Thousand Oaks D, then yeah, every, I mean, D is fifty.
Eleven, twelve are fifty? Or one, nine, twelve?
Yeah.
Five fifty on the plot.
Doesn't look like it.
Yep.
Cause I know, when I was looking at the plats, it was in my house, some are thirty, some are fifty.
Yeah, I don't know if there's some confusion, but the way the plats recorded, it shows them all as the front is fifty for a Thousand Oaks Plat D. Now, there might be, I don't know, if those individual lot owners, if someone's that we don't own, if they got a variance on their lots, I'm not sure if it was out of some way or.
And that was part of the confusion, because I didn't know that said something about it's a fifty foot back, but then if you look at some of the individual.
I'm looking at these building envelopes. They're like, one oh seven, one oh eight look like a fifteen, and when you get one oh nine, one ten, or eleven, those look like thirty.
Yeah. Cause you can see mine right there on thirty-one, that's fifty on two sides.
Yeah, I can see fifty on your corner there.
But you can see one eleven, doesn't look like a fifty.
No, it's not, one eleven, one twelve, one thirteen, one fourteen, one fifteen all look like, and then, yeah. And then you go across to one nineteen, one twenty, they look fifty.
One thirty, one twenty-nine do as well, they're all fifty.
Yeah, one eleven, one twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen all look like they're thirty, one, one ten, one nine.
Are those ones that drop off on the hill in the back?
Yeah. I'm actually thinking of going the other way, let's do a front setback of seventy-five, rear setback of seventy-five. For one thirty, one twenty-nine, one eleven, one twelve.
And I know Ted, you ain't got a three.
I haven't got a three, variance along the.
Two variances. Cause here's my question here, um, I mean, variances are usually, so, so here's my understanding, so, so I was on the Board of Adjustments in West Jordan for five years, this is a long time ago. And my understanding is, is, and I know we're adjusting that here even currently, but there's four criteria that has to be met that's under the state constitution in order to grant a variance. Um, and that's just not willy-nilly, you have to meet those criteria in order for it to be met. It's, it's not up to the Board of Adjustments to decide, oh, we feel sorry for this guy. Those criteria have to be met. So having said that, one of the big thing is, is are the rights of the property owner that's wanting the variance being infringed, or is, can he enjoy the same thing that his neighbors enjoy? Or is he, if he can enjoy everything that his neighbors enjoy, then technically that's one of the criteria you can't give a variance for. But if because of the shape of the lot or the terrain or the topography or something is preventing him from enjoying what his neighbors can, then that becomes one of the criteria that can be used to grant that, that variance. So I'm, I'm trying to keep this really simple. So I guess my question is, is to go carte blanche on all eighteen of these rather than just do a little one by one. I realize the simplicity of, deal the lots down and over, but I don't know if all these are going to need it and if they would meet that criteria, does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. But that's what we discussed last month, didn't we?
And I wasn't here yet, Ted and I were firing stuff.
The other concern I have is that there are another sixteen lots that are not covered in this. And so if we give this right to those, the eighteen owned by Summit and on the Yorba Canyon parcel map, two of those are not owned by Summit, but they're very far behind. So they may be owned by Summit now. And now, so we're treating those sixteen that own a lot already different than we're treating Summit if we give them this carte blanche for thirty feet? I don't, I don't, I don't feel about that.
The, there's another thought process is to give them all thirty.
What, what would that hurt? What would that hurt?
How many of those are built on?
Six.
Six of them? None of, none of the Summit Creek ones are built. No, 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 in that plaque.
I think there's.
There's, there's a few, there's maybe.
There's six.
Cause you're.
Four, five.
There are five that are built with.
So let me ask you a question.
And tens that fit with thirty.
So you apply without variance, did you have to pay anything for that application?
Okay.
Well, but that's.
Oh, it did.
No, no, that's changed.
Oh, it's a board of judges.
Yes, but they didn't charge you an application fee at that time or anything like that, which, which is standard to charge.
Probably, cause I had fifty on two, cause I was on a corner, I had fifty on two sides. So my billable area was, I can see what, I could go a little bit.
So, so, since that, that would apply to him, cause he's being denied similar.
And there, there are.
Uh, uh, or he couldn't enjoy the same thing as his neighbors did because of that corner restriction, so.
It's.
So that's, they got it for free. I know. But I, but what I can say is if nobody has paid for that application fee and now it's just gonna be given to everybody, then those fees should be, I mean, there's a domino effect, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, right.
Right on.
The, the two lots that are right behind Ted on Cooper Run.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, the drop off from those is even worse than his.
Yeah, they're never gonna go.
And that's, those are clearly ones that.
Same with Lofer Canyon, those two across from me.
Yeah.
Those ones go straight down.
So is that like one eleven, one twelve?
True.
So those are watching, start to look at it, say, okay, i- is that a lot that you could grant that for potentially because they can't bill on it?
Yeah.
You know, one, two, three. Yeah, for fifteen hundred bucks or so, we grant it to them, that's what they're gonna have to. Is that what the fee's gonna be? Probably, it's gonna be an attorney's fee.
Yeah.
So much an hour.
That's the worst part of the two seven.
So I'm, I'm looking at it too, if you've got eighteen of these applications, i- if it's something that we can do for free.
Yeah.
For the people. There's nothing saying we can't if we meet, you know, if the other requirements are, are met. Uh, who would object to having a thirty foot front setback rather than a fifty? They can still place their house at fifty if they want to do. New homeowners may not, existing might be concerned. This falls under purgative, between Corbin and I, where my bill is still.
It's a slow change, too soon. You can see.
I was told I had to do certain setbacks and then afterwards the change.
Every other lot, thousand goes, has fifty foot setbacks.
The house behind me got thirty foot?
No, he's fifty feet. Yeah, he is.
For the front and the back?
No, no, only the front.
Here's, what are the side yards?
They have to be fifty.
Okay.
They should be fifty. Well, I'm, yeah.
This is a sore spot, let me just share.
Well, I understand that, and I understand your frustration, and I don't understand why Corbin told you that. Cause he was flat out wrong.
Let me share, sometimes when these plaits have been amended, they've been amended with improper setbacks. But the city has honored those improper setbacks, cause that's what's been used to market and sell those lots. So even they're not, we're not maybe in keeping with what a PUD or any other zone should have had, the city has honored that error that was made on those setbacks. So we have to look at the plat, including any amended plaits. Because the table we have may not apply to.
But there is an amendment plaque here that goes to thirty feet, so I'm trying to stop that.
Okay, very possible, but Plat D has been amended.
I agree with your view.
From, from other, yeah, the.
Probably original, but it's still a fifty foot front side.
Probably, yeah. So anyway, I, that's what I wanted to open up and get everybody's thoughts and views on.
Are, are the limitations or the choices thirty or fifty?
Yeah, there's only two.
Because of forty?
Nope.
Well, the U D is very specific, since thirty or fifty. And that's what Thousand Oaks was. involved in, was the planning development concept.
So Ben, a question for you.
Yeah.
Of these, sixteen or eighteen?
Eighteen.
How many of those are right now currently buildable? I know Bear Hollow's not.
Um.
I know you had utility issues going down at the end of the evening, that's not true.
Oh, you mean buildable as far as?
Fifty foot.
Just.
Somebody walked in today and wanted to pull a permit on those sixteen, how many of those are permissible today?
Um, so, I guess that's up to Corbett, but they wouldn't give us a C O, right? Because there's no, like, there's no power, there's no gas, is that what you're asking?
Yeah. So they couldn't qualify for building permit, cause the infrastructure is, is yes for those lots.
Well, not for some of them.
Bear Hollow doesn't exist.
There's some.
Eagle Nest does, and with that in mind, Todd, who did?
Uh, Cougar Run.
Eagle Nest from, from Bear Hollow going back up, like, east?
I count.
I thought done, right? From Bear Hollow to the cul-de-sac, there's, there's no power, there's no gas.
Okay.
Bear Hollow's not even paved yet.
Yeah, Bear Hollow's just, we, we, we drive in the fire trucks, it's just gravel.
Count six of them.
All of Cougar Run though, could be built on.
Cougar Run.
Yeah, there's no gas, but, but, but everything else is done.
So power's in?
Power, everything's done with gas.
Gas, gas is a fixable thing, yeah.
Gas goes down to the one thirty, one just past me.
And then there's no rock mine ditch yet.
Okay, but those are not insurmountable.
You got, you got Swenson, it's right across the street, that's the last house on Eagle Nest that's under construction, and it's kind of across from, from Bear Hollow.
That's right, Bear Hollow.
Yeah, that's right across from Bear Hollow.
So we've got, we've got it down that far.
He goes right down to Bear Hollow, basically.
Yeah.
He comes across, he's right on Bear Hollow area, that's about the end of the power. My gas is, gas gonna come in, they'll run along the lot, cause the orange had down past their house, Clark's got it down past their house, I got it down past mine, and then, they'll turn it down past there, and they'll be walking along, the power, they even on it.
They wanna do a whole thing. So again, I'm looking at the building envelopes on like one eleven, one twelve, and again, it's a small plat, but if you were to go to scale on that, that looks to me like a thirty footer.
Yeah, if you look up farther.
So I guess what I'm trying to say, man, some of those everywhere it shows there.
Yeah.
I, I think that needs to be maybe looked at a full-size plat, and.
That was my justification.
But my thought is if that's on the recorded plat, and that's at scale of that, then to me, that kind of, believe.
So what, what's the gospel? What, what's written language-wise, fifty foot or on scale?
That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to say is what.
Yeah.
So when I went to the Board of Variance, that was one of my points I made to them, I said, listen, since fifty feet, but you look at half of these lots in here, and they're thirty, they're showing thirty.
Yeah.
And that's probably what we need to find out, is what lots are.
Cause that might work to your benefit with minimal effort. Cause that's the recorded plat.
Yeah.
I have no problem with thirty, I mean, really, I haven't, I object when I did the same thing.
Yeah, I'd say, I.
And those lots in there.
There may not be a personal objection, I just worry about a domino effect, that's what I'm saying.
I would just say, you all, Plat D, just give them a carte blanche, just because it's, most of those lots are pretty available unless you can come forward. You're either going off into Lofer, or you're heading.
Yeah, and it gets steep in Lofer really quick.
Now, you hit down to the very bottom of the cul-de-sac, you know.
Well, but, but most of the ones on both sides of Bear Hollow, really are not, do not have, except maybe in the backyard on the other side. On the left side, it's.
Go nuts, you know, you're gonna have huge retaining walls as you go far back in the hill. The other side, not too bad on, on the north side of Bear Hollow. South side, you'd have some huge retaining walls if you had to go back.
Fifty feet on some of those isn't a problem. Right, it was just, we, the whole reason this came up is we were looking at getting one forty-four, I was talking to Jody about one forty-four, the slope is, is kind of restrictive. She said, well, the variance process is really challenging right now, cause you guys are in the process of moving to the new process.
Yeah, I think it's doing.
And it would take forever, and so, well, maybe this will work, we could just amend the plat and solve it that way, and so that's why, I mean, we're happy to do the variance process, we were kind of guiding this guy.
And, and, and I knew where I was headed, I didn't hear a dollar amount till tonight, that kind of is not a happy thing.
And that's not final?
I know, but it's, it's a ballpark, yeah, and, and that's not a happy number.
Attorney's.
Attorney could be.
Too grand.
Anything, anything more than two or three hundred dollars is, is, is a scary number, and that was definitely a scary number. And times that by sixteen, that's a substantial amount. So at this point, is it within the purview of you guys to, to recommend amendment, plat amendment, I guess is what you're looking at, basically, right? You know, that's the, I, to be truthful, I don't know.
Okay.
It says a planning commission, doesn't say city council. Says a planning commission has the authority to decide whether it's fifty feet or thirty feet. I'd wanna check with the mayor and see what, if he, what his views are on it, or.
I, I, first step we need to take is to find out what the final plot was approved as.
Yeah, I agree.
And so if there are thirty-foot setbacks already approved, then we take those off the table.
Yeah, that, that solves some of them right there, I think, and it may solve the worst of them, to be honest with you. It could be justification then for doing the rest of them too.
Yes.
If that was the case. Can you, David Simon, Ben?
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it somewhere else, scale it.
If you can get a, applauded where it's actually two-scale, and then see what's thirty and what's fifty.
Yeah, I've got software I can.
Yeah, I say somebody with a catch doesn't do that. I was looking at that, we're just looking, and it looks like that's the case.
I could go get my computer.
Yeah, it's, it's clear, some of our.
Well, you can definitely see there's different building envelopes.
Okay.
Okay, cause that, that shows building envelopes?
Yes, yeah.
Building envelope at the setback, though, it may not be, depends on how building envelopes define. This is the building area, it may not be the same as the setback.
I send everybody a copy of this.
Yeah, we have that.
Okay, well, let's table that, discussion end, and any decisions on it, and we'll get some further information, and we can bring up again.
I'm gonna go, I, I appreciate you guys.
Okay, that was the only thing.
I know that the development agreement's on here, but I don't know if there's anything new that I don't already know, and so, thanks for your time, guys. I appreciate it.
Where's Hope here?
Uh, Salt Lake.
Oh.
We'll see you guys.
All right, no, no traffic at this time.
I hate the freeway at four and six.
Oh, it's terrible, it's all right. Even going through, uh, Lehigh now.
Okay, next item is the title changes to four, eight, nine, ten, and eleven, which essentially clarified the duties of the billing official and zoning enforcement officer, and they added a new health and safety officer, which the city doesn't have. This has been drafted by our attorney, uh, been tweaked in three or four places as well. It allows, uh, the billing official to, to have basic needs to help him, and it also allows for the zoning enforcement officer to have basic needs to help him or her. So, this is kind of an adjunct to the issue of the, uh, changes in the, you know, ordinance, specifying our change in appeal authority from a five-person commission to, uh, a single appeal authority or attorney. Way of updates, I know that the mayor has interviewed three people, and I think what he's planning on doing is, um, establishing, um, kind of rotation for them.
So you get the first one, second, third, or whatever?
Something, yeah. Maybe one will come with certain expertise and.
Okay.
And that sort of thing, so, um, but he's in the process of working, working through that kind of detail. So this, this doesn't, it's, it's city-related to that, but it's not dependent upon that, or that's not dependent upon, on this.
So the attorneys wrote this up?
Yes, our city attorneys. So, uh, we've had a public hearing on it, reminder to you all, uh, the, the city council has not. So it would go to the city council with the recommendation from us, day in, term out, the public hearing on it, and then make their decision. I spent a lot of time with it, with Jody, and I'm, I'm good with it, with the way it is, I think we've corrected any questions that we had with it, we're, we're very minor. It's, I, I don't mean to say that, I mean, this has been back and forth probably seven or eight times, but from the last final draft to this one, it, yeah, very, very few change.
These couple typos.
Are they still in there?
Yeah, which is odd, the term is. Permanent occupancy, we spelled permanent occupancy wrong.
Circle those, Lori, point those out to Jody.
Well, we should get a reduced rate if they're having to cut their work.
Doing that quite a bit on plans.
Been seeing it, seeing it too much, I guess. So, again, primarily, the, the duties of the, um, billing official are primarily in Title Ten, having to do with enforcement of the I B C, I R C code, uh, that does say in there that he is not the land use authority, although he can be designated to help the land use authority if needed. And the designation of the, uh, zoning enforcement officer is primarily in eleven, where zoning is, uh, let me back up. So you making notes on this, Lori?
What?
You making notes?
Where?
Off your spine. Yeah, four dash one dash seventeen criminal penalty.
Four one seventeen.
Any person who violates the end provision of this chapter?
We really didn't have our spell check on.
So the person who violates the end provision, and guess we should cross out that. So, four dash one dash seventeen criminal, criminal A.
Yeah.
First sentence, any person who violates, cross out the after that. I'm sure there's more on those items.
Well, we should, you know, ours on our buildings.
So Title Nine, primarily related to billing official, with enforcement of the I B C and I R C, building codes, issues of building permits, et cetera. And Title Ten will be more left of purview of the zoning enforcement officer. As opposed to zoning or land use ordinance. The, all the definitions are, are replaced, except the zoning enforcement officer and the billing official have been.
So yard front, yard rear, yard.
That's, yeah, that's what we changed.
Yeah, that'll get changed with the, with the interview.
Yeah. The plat was the emphasis of this exercise, is to better clarify the duties responsibilities of, uh, in our existing ordinance, uh, billing inspector is used, and.
Very broad.
Very broad, and so, we don't usually have a billing inspector, because we contract that out, so billing official then is now being used to describe those, those duties. So, it was a little low with our previous ordinance a little bit, um, with responsibilities, and the design of this was to further delineate that, those responsibilities and clarify them as to who was doing what. If you guys do make a motion to pass it.
We did, we'll make a motion, yeah.
Maybe suggest.
Yeah, we're subject to spelling corrections.
Yeah. That way you don't have to bring it back again.
Fifty-dollar reduction in the legal fee.
I'd have to pay for like fifteen minutes in a period. Any other questions on that before I ask for a motion?
It's been a long time coming.
Yeah, it has been, a while, yep. Well, first one, reading up on that a lot, and so, we've been back and forth quite a bit on it to get it straightened around. Okay, let's, we'll take a motion to approve that, subject to the spelling errors that need to be corrected with it.
I just.
Okay. Second, second, okay?
I was going to, though I saw seven slots. I can't second one of those.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any close? Okay, thank you. Okay, let's move on to this shipping container ordinance. This has been, this was set aside for a while.
Six months.
Yeah, and six months is up. And so, one of the concerns that I had was this five A, uh, actually, three also, with this five hundred dollars was a sufficient bond if we needed to get in there and move a shipping container.
It would cost you more than that to have the tow truck.
Yes, yeah. I was thinking of a thousand.
Even that's not gonna, it's not thirty-five hundred.
What do you think we're covering?
Well, once I show up and have to move it, what am I gonna take?
An impound lot.
Yeah. With the other parked vehicle.
Cause I, I had a container once, I was supporting people I was doing loans, and every time I moved that, and this has been fifteen years, and every time I moved it, it cost me five hundred bucks just to move it. And I, and I was usually just moving it up to, to the end of the next development, to the end of the next development.
Whether to say tow away, maybe we say confidence gated.
Destroyed.
Then the city can sell it.
This has a legal thing that's any.
No, no, I don't think it does. But you can certainly, you're inbound it somewhere.
So you're looking at a five hundred dollar performance bond, and then a fine of five hundred dollars a day until compliance.
Correct.
Yeah, the, the per day thing's plenty. Performance bond, which you've gotta do something with it, five hundred's not gonna.
See, and on B, part B, the, the container would be considered abandoned, I, well, I'd say in here, abandoned, forfeited to the city, as agreed to in the assigned documents as part of the billing permitting process, and the five hundred dollar performance bond posted to guarantee the required work to be done, which was identified in the billing permit approval process will be used by the city to remove and dispose of the container or trailer as determined by the city. So I'm saying in here, and then we'd need to obviously run this by the attorney, that the city can, can consider it abandoned and forfeited to the city, and then we want, we want sufficient money to allow us to move it and sell it, whatever we're gonna do with it, but not be, not be on the hook to have to pay for moving it.
We probably could go back then to item number three and.
Yes, we would, increase that.
A thousand dollars.
A thousand will give you something to work with, five hundred isn't.
Well, I would make that like a base, we change it to a thousand.
Change it to a thousand.
We talked about that before, would we table?
Yeah, yeah.
Makes it worth it, they're ready to do some.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
Well, the city, this isn't, the building permit's gonna cost them too. So this is just a performance bond, they're gonna have to post in addition.
In addition to it until all the criteria is met.
Right.
And then they would get the performance bond back.
Right.
Once all that criteria of whatever the permit is required.
Yeah.
I'm still not a fan of either of these, I'll just tell you that.
Yeah, I have some reservations as well. We're gonna have some problems because we've got a couple people who moved on these on their properties already without, yeah, but we haven't, the problem is, we haven't had anything to prohibit them, prohibit them from. Shipping containers like it's fall easier than like.
I mean, the other thing we had was, they, anyway, the thing was a shipping container had to be sent back from apartments as an accessory building.
Yeah. But these were moved before that even happened.
Well, there was one of them that was too close and they moved it back.
They did.
So it meant.
There's one guy's got three of these on his lot right now.
Containers or semi-traders?
Containers.
Containers.
Without any approval or anything else. And, and there's another person who's put a couple of containers on the property and put a cement pad over the top of them. So, I mean.
That's not gonna protect the sides.
No, it's not.
Did he bury them at all or just?
It's just on top. So, um, we, I think you've all seen this before, um, any, any concerns with, with the wording that's, that's in there and any, any part of it?
A few, yeah.
Yeah. I think, I sent this to you, the two page that you emailed. It may not have been with you.
Was that?
It was your own.
It wasn't with your packet and I, I thought you would bring it with you.
Oh, maybe I did.
Cause I did, I did send it to you.
Yeah, I was just looking at my emails, I couldn't find it. Cause usually I'll just look at my emails.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I might have took, correct myself, yeah, it's in your, it's on your.
Should've been on the desk.
It's on your desk, I did make a comment.
Starts on, and Title eleven dash two C.
Yeah, I've got this thing we just did, summary of protect schoolhouse, hand comments, agenda, and the pencil.
There you go. Cause your vote.
Can we just ban them all together moving forward?
We're, we're, well. We could, I mean, right now, we, we went from approval to.
Limbo.
To limbo, to not allowing them. If, uh, if there was a consensus that we wanted to not allow these as accessory buildings, we could, we could take that vote.
I'll lose back the semi-trader, I'm sorry.
We have to take the wheels off.
You have to add trip to get the appearance of stickged or proofed out.
So that's where the outside framing.
When it's just a shed over the floor. So you build, basically you got this and you just put walls, wood walls around it.
Yeah, you might as well just build a shed.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking, if we're making it.
It's a pig with loop stick.
Yeah. I mean, if I don't look into the sense, they just have to build a shed, it costs us not, rather buy a trailer than build a shed over it. I guess you maybe get a little better insulation value or something if you're doing it.
Those containers are solid.
Yeah, they're, well, I have a use for your zillions.
They say the corner supports are good, but the rest of it is not. It's not designed in and of itself for structural integrity. Now, you see them stacked on ships, you know, for.
Corners.
But it's the corners that are definitely a structure.
No, I was.
But even, I've seen some people who've made, or I've heard people who have made, um, mini houses out of it, and they don't enforce, reinforce the top, snow comes and.
And goes in.
Goes in.
There's a whole show about shipping containers destruction, where they turn them into offices.
Yeah, have you seen the one in Springfield?
There's one in Springfield there. Oh, I don't, I've seen that one, yeah.
That whole set of shipping containers.
Yeah, that's where our office is down Springfield, so you see that a lot. But there's actually shooting how they do the renovation shows.
Yeah.
You know, flip it or whatever.
And some of them are pretty attractive.
They do that now with shipping containers.
Do a lot of work with it, with them, kind of attractive.
And they actually got places that specifically build shipping containers for.
Accessory buildings, yeah.
And they actually look quite nice when they do a show, but yeah, that's, that's a show. Some of those would make them look really nice.
The attorney, nothing falls apart.
Stupid fools too.
Oh, really?
Yes.
I haven't seen that.
I've saw, I saw one show where they, they turned one into a.
Oh, wow. Yeah, well, I saw where they turned one into an office. Actually, they're quite nice when they got done, but it was, I didn't know why they had to have the shipping container, you could, uh, built probably a shed, it just is.
Yeah, if your requirement there is, it's gotta be, be pretty, then maybe it solves the problem. Yeah. And when we present a plan, that has to be shown on the plan. It can't be, well, this is what we're gonna do, it has to be, has to be.
I think this kinda solves some of the issues, I think, John said a lot of things, yeah, just get a little shed, it's easier. So this doesn't make it easy for them just to pull a container on site and drop it and leave it.
No, they've gotta have a pad, it's gotta be inspected before they do that.
Stick framing, windows, all that kinda stuff, so it's, it's.
Totally self-solved. Laurie, do you have a question?
Well, I was gonna say, you can still build an ugly shed.
Yeah, that's true.
How can we require it to look nice when we can't allow a house, I mean, you can build an ugly house, right?
Yes.
So how can we allow?
Well, there's nothing here says ugly. Or pretty. It just has to, the, it, it, it has to be concealed.
Yeah, ugly, I had to be humble, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't normally dictate ugly, cause then you're determining, who's gonna be turning around ugly.
Yeah.
But we, we're kinda saying.
But it has to be concealed for what its original purpose was. Are, are we good for allowing shipping containers and trailers to be used as, um.
Accessory buildings.
Accessory buildings?
I'd suggest pull out the semi-traders, well, that's just. We don't currently have any semi-traders that we're aware of.
Not to my knowledge.
I think that would be a good time to just say that.
I do.
Shipping container, you go down on the ground, that semi is gonna be four feet off the ground. And those that say you have to pull the axles and wheels.
That's what I mean, you have to lower it to ground level.
Yeah.
And I do indicate here that camp trailers are not approved to be converted or used accessory buildings.
How about train cars?
Lower cars.
Do you ever read box car children?
When did I have chain string finishes?
Yeah, that'd be cute.
When I was a teenager, my launcher was the prettiest boxcars on the desert. Because we would use old boxcars to put grain in on the farm. And my dad had me go out and paint all the boxcars so that they looked nice.
Do they still have the tracks underneath or were they just unit on the?
They were, they didn't have any track, never installed. Cool. And they were, they were grain storage sheds, is what they were.
Yeah.
Um, I, I wonder, one thought I had as I was thought over this, you know, in, um, now my mind is, is leaving me, I'm getting too old for this. Um, we've got in the fencing ordinance, and I, and I'm not talking about the fencing ordinance, I'm talking about in relationship to this. We've got about a section in there, section eight, V eight, where it talks about those that are grandfathered in, that were there before the fencing ordinance was written. And then if this, this, or this happens, then you have to come in compliance with this ordinance. So maybe we need something in here to say something like that, so that those that already have shipping containers have to keep them maintained and looking good, or else they're gonna have to come in compliance with this. We can't make this ectocytic.
No.
You know, but if we have that, a non-conforming structure, if this, this, or this happens, you've gotta bring it into compliance.
What criteria would you put to this, this, and this?
What's in, what's in one through five?
What, say again, Laurie?
What's in one through, what goes to?
Well, those are permitting, permitting process for accessory building.
And they're not going to have a structure around them. They're going to be a standard long shipping container, because they don't have to paint it. Uh, maybe, maybe we put something in like, if they, uh, have an eyesore, you have to paint them.
Again, that's still subjective.
But item two. Well, but, but, and, you know, that's one of the criteria in the fencing ordinance. If you don't keep them up, if you don't keep it maintained, then you're going to have to fix that.
To grandfather. Yeah.
I certainly think too, if you modify any of it, any of these that are grandfathered in, like anything else, you know, once you start modifying it, now you gotta bring it up to curb code, like your house or whatever. I mean, if they make any modifications, then they've gotta go all the way and bring it up to curb code, but.
But you, you really, well, you want them to make the modifications.
Right.
But if they're gonna have to bring it up to code, then they're not gonna do that. They're gonna leave it trashy, not in the way it is. So what?
That would be a second criteria. So if they're good looking and they say, I'm gonna have a bunch of windows.
We talked about, we talked about the structure of the shipping container, it's the corners.
Right.
And so if the roof falls in, well, there's a snow load, the roof falls in, then they're gonna have to bring it into compliance.
Yeah, I could see that.
Any dilatation beyond the condition when it was originally brought in sight?
If it's not maintained in its original.
Functioning.
Functioning, whatever like that, then it has to be brought into compliance.
Cause if the roof all the way that it's not falling, it'd be functioning anymore.
But even though it's part of the bidding process, if you go back to item two, it says any shipping container must be added to to give it the general appearance of a stick mill or pre-faceted structure or one resembling the structure on the premises. May include windows, framing, trap, paint, because the structure can lose much of its original appearance. These outside structure modifications must have the approval of the city, approval authority regardless of the size of this, or the size of this type of accessory building structure.
Maybe something like, if not maintained in original condition, it must be modified to comply with the criteria as outlined in the ordinance.
And, and also, uh, one of the things in non-conforming fences says, if you change the location or height of the shipping container, then you have to bring it into compliance. So if you wanna move it.
The grandfather clause is literally as it is now where it's at.
That's right.
If it goes downhill.
If you move it, if it deteriorates, then it'll be on its original, then you're gonna have to bring it into compliance.
Okay, I can see that. I'll, I'll add that and send a copy to y'all, we'll send this to the attorney and see where, where they come back on it, or, um. And we'll.
Can't we approve it pending?
No, let's not approve it yet, yeah, let's, um, cause they're, I can see the attorney coming back maybe and saying, what about this, or what about that, adding some more, and so let's just kinda leave it, leave it open now as a working document and then we'll bring it back again here and formalize it. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Do we want to skip it out to number twenty, or?
Um, let's, well. Let me. Yeah, we have a question. Robert, you got a couple minutes?
Yeah.
You wanna come up and talk to us a little about your day? And mine, and Ted's?
Not the burden, Laurie.
Probably you guys, you appreciate it for your time.
Let me, let me preface this a little bit. Laurie's got some lots, all the seasons, they're approved lots, and, um, what has happened there is there's a lot of, when the subdivision was developed, there was buildup around the cul-de-sacs, there were cul-de-sacs, there were called cul-de-sacs there. There was a buildup of the, of the land and, how about, what is it, thirty, forty feet, Robert, down the cul-de-sacs?
Yeah, when you put the cul-de-sac in on those slopes, we cut down about four or five feet on the high side, and we generally fill in about six feet on the low side, whatever we need to. And then we have to fill the cul-de-sac out at least about thirty feet so that they got the room to put the utilities in, the gas and the power. And so when we, when we end up building that, that's what I'm doing, when you end up building up the cul-de-sac, it leaves it so that the, what do you call it, the natural.
Grade.
Grade line is back, quite a ways back, so if you use that natural grade line that we built up to fit, that natural grade line's so low, then it's hard to get a home in there. And, uh, if we use, the suggestion I thought would be good is if you use the curb and gutter as a natural grade, cause when they, when they sell the building lots, that's what it is, is their natural grade. And as I read the ordinance, it says on, or those little papers they have on deciding the height of it, I misunderstood it. I thought where we had the cross-section, it was on the height on the sides of the peak that's in the middle of the house. And so I've got some people that's got plans drawn that don't fit the subdivision. I've been able to change three of them this last week. It hasn't changed the pitch on the roofs and things, but I got one that if we build it where, where it's approved to be built, it's gonna be about three, three and a half feet below curb and gutter. And then we got the driveway going down in, into the garage. And if you raise it up so it's like eighteen inches, sixteen, eighteen inches above the curb and gutter, it puts us on one corner, it puts us to where we have about thirty-eight foot height off of the original soil, but the finish grade's gonna be about thirty-four, thirty-five feet. And everywhere else in the lot, we designed the house to fit the lot, thinking that we could do it the way I thought we could. And so everywhere else, if the guacaw basement fits the natural contour of the land, and the garage hits a nice, natural contour of the land, pretty nice, and then that makes it sort of the lot next to it, tie you into this lot. And also around the corner, it's gonna be a little harder on that one because it's down subdiet, but it will help a lot on that to make it work, you know, we're gonna probably have to build one of those modern type homes on that one to get that to work, cause it backs why no. But not just in this one cul-de-sac, it's in all three cul-de-sacs that got a situation, because we have the buildup on the one side and we fill on the other, or we cut a little bit on one side and fill it on the other side. And so I'm facing this with all three cul-de-sacs, I've had four people back out of their lot sales, because they can't get the home to work. And now three people backed out, I've got one that were trying to, two of them that were redesigning the home a little bit. This particular one, he's lowered the roof quite a bit, and it is a tall house. And, but to take away from the character, if you keep lowering it down, it's gonna affect a few things that, it's a, it's just a ramble, but it's got fourteen foot ceilings, and it has a pretty high pitched roof, he's changed it from a fourteen, I think it's a fourteen twelve pitch roof one time, he's changed it down to about a nine twelve right now. And maybe if I show you this plan, you can see kinda what I'm trying to say.
Let me ask you some questions, Robert.
Okay.
Background, thirty years of construction, where I live, most of my neighbors have negative sloping driveways up on Eagle Nest, on the downhill side, so it's, it's a common thing here. So my question is, is, because Severn and I are in here doing site plan approvals today, which is a whole nother story, and we were overhearing these guys at the corporate talk about this.
Yeah.
I interjected myself several times today, didn't I? Yeah, that'd be funny. So my question is, is if he did a three foot negative sloping driveway coming down the roof.
would it work with his height of the house and the natural grade as our definition says? Or is that the only thing that's keeping him from building it is, is him dropping it lower versus having a bump?
When they put the original sewer line in Summit Creek Drive, we designed the subdivision so they could deepen subdivision, or the.
So you'd have to put a sewer pump in if you dropped it?
Yeah.
Okay, now you understand.
We had it lower the sewer line, the manholes where these intersections were gonna be.
Okay.
And so our sewer's thirteen feet deep, so it's pretty deep.
That is deep.
And right now, if we go where we want to be, it won't, or where they want it, it won't be able to hook in the sewer, that's pump in. And we always wanna try and stay away from those if we can.
Yeah, nobody's available.
The problem we have is if we put this home down the distance they want it, which is about five feet below curb, then the lot next to it, we're gonna have driveway going up, it's gonna slope two feet up into the house, then we're gonna have this one that's slope seven feet down into it, or five feet down into it. But the, the natural grade is gonna be almost a thirteen foot putt. And so it's just.
You, you understand our thirty-five foot fiasco that we have going on right here?
I, I do.
You do?
Yeah.
You utilize it, this is a Pandora's box and nobody wants to touch, right?
I understand that.
Okay, so just so that's out in the air, right?
That was part of the discussion today. There were bigger issues than just this one home that we're handling.
No, and I, yeah, it's just, cause, cause this is, I mean, we did three plans today. Yeah, that's how it would be approved. It's the criteria, but one's gonna be a real problem with building height.
Yeah, they were, they were ten feet, they were ten feet. A lot of the homes that they looked at is, is gonna have to be redone. I mean, nowhere are they going to, and I don't know if they had a misunderstanding or whatever. We find often that the architects don't even know what our building height ordinance is. And so they, they build a home that looks nice and, and often no regard to, well, what's the building height? What do I have to keep it in? So that, that does happen, yeah.
All of, all my clients I sell the lots to, they receive a CCNR which states thirty-five feet. However, it needs to be approved to the city. My thirty-five feet comes from the foundation where the garage is up to the, the peak of the roof.
Yes. Which is different than ours.
Which is different.
Yeah, different.
Uh, because if we, it's gonna be very difficult to get a home in any of these lots if they have a walkout basement. And a lot of these lots on these subdivisions with the cul-de-sacs are designed for walkout basements.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's part of the field.
This particular plan, I thought he did a great job designing it to fit it, but then when I was told how to understand the, I guess you call it an ordinance or the restrictions that you have on it. Uh, I understood it a little differently. Of course, we all try to understand things the way we want to sometimes, I'll admit that. But, uh, I kind of thought that we would count the curb and gutter as the, the natural grade because that's where the natural grade becomes when I sell it to them. And so what we have is the curb and gutter, then over the side of it, we, we got the curb and gutter, then we're gonna have her filled out about thirty feet. And I don't fill it all the way up because they're just gonna have to dig it up for the foundation.
Exactly.
So I just filled up enough getting utilities in, and then, but then we got a drop that goes down about eight feet.
Yeah, I'm guessing eight to ten, yeah.
And so, so that's what brings our, our line down so low to make it work.
Cause here's, here's my personal thing that I see as we do the site plan approval. And again, this is, we're seeing it, you know, we see it four seasons, Summit Creek here. We're seeing some big homes come through right now.
Yeah.
Like humongous homes.
Yeah.
And with that comes nine, ten, twelve foot floor height, or see, ball heights, per level. Walkout basements, nine, ten, twelve, fourteen pitch roofs. You know, you start doing the math and adding all that up, thirty-five is gone really quick.
It's gone on the main floors, that type of walkout basement.
Yeah. Yeah, we had.
We're thirty-two.
Thirty-three foot floor, but they didn't count the walkout on the back, which is another ten feet.
Where is the thirty-two?
I have thirty-two right here. I do, the line in is the curb and gutter line. And maybe thirty-two six at the top of the peak from the curb and gutter on the front. But then on the back, we would be pushing.
Yeah, another, and now, how tall is his baseball balls?
Uh, they're nine feet.
Nine, so yeah, so you're gonna be pushing nine or ten feet above that on the back.
The way this one sits specifically is, is the ground slopes like this. So down on the bottom corner, after we got through all the numbers, it'll be about three feet, it'll be about thirty-eight feet from natural grade.
Totally, exceeds it by three feet.
As you come up the hill, you actually get less than thirty-five feet in the house.
So you're talking one corner.
So you're talking one corner.
But the finish grade will be a thirty, the, the finish grade would be thirty-five.
Finish grade, we'll put it about.
Thirty-six.
No, cause he's gonna have that walkout basement right in natural grade, right?
You can get out of here, Robert, just pump it down right here.
Corner here still five. And, and, and Robert, actually what we were doing today, we went over to Snare, came up with a way we thought he could make it work as is, and still be still in that cut. Then we get talking about the bigger picture, cause the lot around him, this is even gonna be a bigger problem.
Yes, it is.
So is this?
I'm gonna have to put a flat roof on that one.
Is this the corner?
Yeah.
Is this the corner you're talking about?
Yes, this is the little corner.
Okay.
This is the, that's the natural grade.
We have a final grade and natural's more.
Natural grade right here.
That's kind of your.
Okay, so the finish grade.
So we gotta go up here. This is the corner we're talking about.
But this is the front.
That's the front, this is the back.
But that's the corner though, is the front corner.
See, front here is the lowest point.
That's a little.
That is the lowest total elevation.
And then after you get, uh, when you move about six feet away from that corner, it's up about three feet, oh, two feet. I'm not exactly, but you're had better have either of the two.
Cause, come over here, cause I wanna make sure I don't say something wrong.
No, dude, Ken, Ken knows it's better than I do.
The actual grade is. If you're relative to the house.
Cause see, he's showing the thirty-two nine at here, okay?
That's a finish grade.
But here, the house is a thirty-two nine. You follow me?
Twenty-four, almost one five.
You're gonna measure from here to here, we'll measure from here to here. Do you follow me?
No, but this is the natural. He's gonna measure from here to here.
So this.
This is the natural.
This right here is thirty-five feet. This is basement right here.
Yeah.
That's about thirty-five feet, right?
To natural.
Fourteen, I think it was almost fourteen, ten, nine, you're about thirty-five feet to nat, you know, to the bottom of these basements.
So where's the natural?
Right here, but you can see the natural grade sits just a little bit below the bottom of the basement. This is the natural actually down here, is where it actually sits.
See, what I'm saying is, we're not measuring, we're not measuring to this point, we're measuring to here.
If you go to this point, to this point.
No, not there, to back here.
What, what I'm saying is, to the bottom of these basements is thirty-five feet. Natural grades, it's about three feet, two, two feet below that.
The natural.
So he has to either drop this way down.
Well, he's gonna have, yeah, he's gonna have to.
He's gonna have to frost anyway, that's irrelevant, yeah. No, but he's gonna have to, basically, let's say it's basement wall, let's say it's basement wall. So what we figured is he was about, if you kept it level with, so you had a, a, a walk. So what we talked about there is raising it about two feet above the curb, but if you kept it at curb line, you're one foot.
That's the bridge.
This is the curb line on a, I'm sixteen inch above curb line with the foundation.
Right, right. So bottom line is, if you come down to natural and you measure up here, it was about thirty-eight-ish feet.
To here.
To here.
But that measurement would be over here, directly below, directly below that point.
And that's kind of what it was. It was, it was right at the corner of the house.
And if you come up this way in the lot, about ten feet, you're up about two and a half feet.
Yeah, then if you come up, you start getting okay, it's kind of this one.
Just that three.
Yeah.
Now, over here, where it's the tallest, directly below that, to wherever that, that natural reference line is, that would be where the measurement would take place.
Yeah, which in this case.
Continues up.
But ignore this as the natural grade.
Yeah, cause it is, it is actually.
It's actually down here.
Is it, okay.
And look, you know, when you mentioned that we had taken some off of that, that particular corner, we had taken a little bit more than we were. What we taught, you know, four seasons, I got that, yeah, because right here, you got the low grade, and then you go up to it, pump a tree this way, you go up this way. Again, I guess it's a little B right there.
So this is a corner lot, it's one lot.
It's a little cul-de-sac.
Yeah.
It's one you've had so much trouble with, he's changed the plans three or four times.
But in this lot.
Trying to keep it wide.
I think what we came up with today is if, if he made his basement instead of nine feet, he made it like, was it ten foot something?
Ten seven?
Ten seven, his basement height, he kept this front even with the curb line, then you would be okay.
He doesn't need to go to your problem baseline, he's just taking back from yesterday anyway. He'll have to do what he has to do for frost, yeah, he, he'll have to do what he has to do for frost, that's.
Sounds like exposed, so we're measuring the height from the natural grade, not, not, not the curb.
And, and it's not so much just this one, it's all three cul-de-sacs.
And in this one, right here, this corner is kind of an issue. And that's kind of what, I mean, we, we sat in there for an hour today and we came up with a way that he could make this work without having to raise it five feet. But if you raise it three feet, did some things, we could make it work, but.
I think three foot six would get us into the sewer.
This one, or here, is gonna be a bigger issue. Not a lot around.
And the next one.
That one, they're gonna have to go out.
Yeah, that one's getting, gonna be a bigger issue than this one.
So I wanted to bring in me filling, fill the pad there. I've stripped, one thing, I've stripped all the topsoil off there so I could do that. And, uh, in that particular area, there's about four for the topsoil, or human material, it's covered that washment down there. So I, I'm gonna get this all out of there so they don't get all mixed up and they play on top of it. And then I think they go back in and that we didn't make it in last fall. I just, he's kind of out of it right now, he's just having a hard time.
So question, so question, so, so again.
I get involved or something.
Yeah.
So this is the current grade here, but did you strip some off of that?
A little bit. I would just maybe if.
You following me? Yeah.
Maybe a foot.
But the other thing, remember when we did that, we said you could use an average to account for holes or a little hill?
Basically, you had to draw a line.
Yeah, you dropped, you dropped from hand to hand, that's what he's done, that's what he's done.
It just happened to be this.
This is the whole lot that they've grabbed.
This end's just kind of sitting with it. It'll be his total.
Cause you did go in and strip that pretty good of all the topsoil.
Not that particular lot, no.
Topsoil, I mean, just kind of the area in general, that's just removed, put to better use. Uh, it's terrible compaction to turn the topsoil on this.
So one of those, right, uh, it's got.
No, it's everything, everything's red. So that's my question is, is if you can.
It's not gonna be enough, I don't agree with that.
Yeah, I know, I'm, I'm, again, I'm just, I mean, if, if that can be substantiated, that, hey, I pulled two or three feet out of here for this and I put, yeah.
How much I'd love to tell you I did, but.
Okay, and that, that's, I'm just asking, so.
But there was some pulled out of that corner, but not, there might have been a foot there.
Foot, okay.
But it just happens to be that that's where the hole is. I mean, it comes back up this way, it comes back up this way.
It's just that spot.
And it comes back up, coming up the backside. It's just that, just, it's just that's where the hole is.
Wherever this, this footprint.
But it's not that deep of a hole.
Wherever it comes, I mean, if this line were down to here, then it would be more accurately portrayed. I mean, it is a straight line from there, but it, it, it probably, it'll, it's going to come down.
And our lines from house to house, not property line or property.
Yeah, it's primary.
Corner of the house, corner of the structure.
The corner of the structure. Could be something more like that, right?
Yeah, close to it. You've seen it, Ted?
We're gonna wait an hour.
No, this one's why I got like this, I think.
Cause I would like to see it.
You know, one of the.
The question is, that's just this lot though, you're saying we still have others?
The other lots aren't as, quite as crucial as this one because their roof's not as high.
Okay.
And, uh.
The guy's trying to dig a foundation now for this lot.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, we sent the, he's had them there for a week.
Oh, yeah, I recognize this name, we looked at this a while ago.
Yeah, a lot of time.
So he modified it from when we first saw it.
We, we, we're on a second model.
We laughed at it the first time.
Yeah.
It was so high, we just laughed and said.
Another thing, you know, there was a lot of inconsistency with these, with the contour lines too, Robert.
Yes, there was.
And I, I think if we can get some accurate contour lines and know exactly what, what, what they represent, I think it will help us get a better picture, what, if anything, we can do to, to help, to help this. And potentially with some adjustments, stay within our ordinance.
Okay.
But without the, without those exact contour lines, we're, we're kinda, and, and a foot or two makes a difference.
Right, yeah, that is a big deal, yeah.
And what happened on the court on it is, we went off the court contour lines, we went off the ones that they, is it county or the state that does them?
You probably got a little light R.
Yeah, we, we downloaded it, and it was pretty accurate, but they had three different ones. They had one that was an accurate one that showed the elevation before we even started. They had one that was kind of showing where we were, but then can make all of the lines across it. And then we had the one that I helped him do, just so we know what, where all the dirt was gonna be stolen. The one he's gonna do all the dirt is gonna be stolen, is the one that got turned in. He got, we changed those so we could have finished grades for that particular one.
I think that was our conclusion kind of today, we talked about is, there's probably something we can make work if we had just right at a foot, cause he's got the footprint of the house painted out.
So is that marked on the earth?
It's marked on, yeah, just shoot some elevation.
Well, it's not really marked, painted all the way out, but, uh, they colored little feather stakes, it's in there.
And he actually had blue lines painted on the ground.
They got the corner marked.
I still look for it, but I didn't see those.
Yeah, he was, he had some blue lines down there painted on his footprint of his house, so I think if they had some shots right there, we get some actual topo right in those spots, that would help us figure out.
What I'd like to do on this particular spot is shoot this exact spot.
Yeah.
And then I want to come over here and shoot a spot over here, over here in the back.
Yeah.
And show you that it's just.
Go five or ten feet.
If it's old and.
That's what I think.
But it's not.
So you've seen it, you know the corner, right? Yeah, it's, you can see it.
I'll, I'll try and get over and look at it with Tim, I'm small tomorrow. I'm running the same in the afternoon.
Friday's rain all day, probably working in this city Friday.
Some rain on Friday.
I'm biking tomorrow at seven till eleven, no, I'm at six, I'm running with the antlers, I'm running until six tomorrow night. But I think if you can get those.
Six thirty?
Those shot, those elevation points, and maybe, you know, John could go over there and take a look. Ted can even just show me what you guys had today, I'd see, yeah, that, cause if, if we can do it and it makes sense, then we can do our thing and it's done, if that makes sense. If that's the only issue and it's a fixable, yeah.
What we'd really like to see, if you can entertain having this curb and gutter resort.
That's a whole different thing.
I think that's the benefit, you know, it's trying to figure out where the natural grade is.
Yeah, yeah, that, it probably isn't gonna happen, but we can try and look at this and, and see, yeah.
Again, that's something we can look to the future possibly. I mean, the city council's gonna be the one that's make, making that kind of a, a judgment call.
After the battle they just dealt with on that, and we're finally feel like we've got it, I don't know if anyone wants to touch it right now. But if there's a way to address this situation of the data you've provided tonight, then let's look at this hard citizen. Does that make sense? Cause, so, let me just, I can look at it tomorrow after I got, oh, at six?
So I can meet you there on my own from home.
Well, ten, I'll go tomorrow. Okay, so maybe he and I look, probably after six. And then if you, if you, if you, maybe I see something I didn't, I, I think he and I think it's something, so I think it's probably, it's four. I'm, I'm, I'm getting a look and say, hey, if, if, if the grade had been less inclined.
Can you get that right?
Would it be two feet higher, three feet higher, and that's, if there's a hole that's, ten feet by ten feet, I don't think we can, yeah. So that, that's what I, that's what. So a challenge I see, and I guess I'll provide some to you. Depot are trying to build luxuries now, and they are building. We had a plan today, you had, that the footprint of the house was seventy-nine feet by a hundred and sixty-one.
Seventy thousand square feet.
Seventeen thousand square feet on the oak.
It's a lot.
It's two point two acres.
We did, it was thirty-one thousand square feet.
I know, but it's just.
Ten car garage.
Yeah, it's just amazing.
Where's that at, sir?
Bird's eye.
Oh.
Bird's eye.
Does he have a helicopter?
Yes, he does. Or is it seventy thousand?
So this one is on Jason Drive.
Is he on Jason, you can see that we tried to make right.
Yeah, so is it this lot here?
This one, this one, it's gonna be tough.
This one's gonna be harsh.
So Ted, I can look at that.
If you can look at this and see if you're okay with me bringing this up, let's see if you feel all the way to the whole, the pad for the footing, is what I'd like to do, but we're still gonna have traffic coming on. You see, this, this elevation here, this particular home here, you just approved a while ago. And we have a garage just right here, it's gonna help us change this elevation in the back. But I don't know, this is our bridge right here.
Yes.
That was my point today, that bridge has to look at this anyway, so.
And this particular home here is about thirty foot. Uh, the footing is about thirty foot higher, twenty foot higher than the road right here, it's way up, they have a driveway to come back up in. Right here, this particular spot right here is pretty level here, and you can see how we filled it up here. So I'm kind of tied in here, I've had them change the roof on this one, and I've had them change the roof on this one to make them work.
And see, the mess is, we're gonna have it, if they can adjust it and it works, they're great.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we've done, this one here is pretty old flat. And I have nine feet difference from here to the top of the curb and gutter here. And this would be about the same. A little bit less over here.
Cause again, I'm, I'm not opposed to people having a little bit of a negative slope, but I think it's actually, it works in the right setting.
Well, it's surprising, we, how many we do have.
We do have a lot, if you start growing out, there's dozens and dozens and dozens.
Ted, there's probably more, more up in the mountainside.
That, that, we have the vegetation, yeah, but, but. We're just three quarter acre lots, so they're not much different than what you are here, maybe slightly bigger, but not easy to grow.
The only thing I was thinking about, it'd be weird, is you've got these houses here on this cul-de-sac. You see this cul-de-sac and all these houses sitting down here.
Yeah, two way down and two way up.
Yeah, you, you want some continuity there, I mean.
It's gotta be balanced somewhere.
And see, right here, you can see we're fifty four, this is actually finished grade is fifty one forty three.
Forty three seventeen.
So we got, uh, that twelve foot of fall from here to here, two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, twelve foot of fall, and but if we dig this down five feet, we put the garage in here. And then we've got seventeen foot difference between here and there, and I've gotta build this up two foot to get the driveway in, we're almost nineteen feet difference, and that's too long.
Yeah. I'll go look at it Ted tomorrow, then if he's got the about work for you, a lot for six, kind of.
This, other lots, don't be.
I'll let you know if I, if there's anything. I mean, if there's a way, not in the ice crossing season, it still works, and it's just a matter of just vali- validating.
Verifying, if this is a run, there's a, there's a, to smack the shots along there.
If it's a Hellenian.
Don't wanna go there.
I know, I know. But if there's, if there's a way, if it's gonna change, this is the way? Cause, I mean, natural grade, okay, well, is that, is that about the same flush or what, you know?
Yeah, and, and that's, I think that's what concerns, is that four stations, it's still much different.
Well, that's.
So much here, I'm upset. Because you have, you know, the water, the, the stuff, you know, you are moving it all over the place. Having a natural grade, so all it hits.
I wanna go and see what I see and see how that falls into my definition of natural grade, that's kind of what I wanna see. Cause that may give some latitude.
That was one of the issues too, of what do we consider, is this area, this thirty foot area that has been built up around the cul-de-sac, do we look at that as being, that's being natural grade? You know?
But it's natural grade to them when I sell them a lot, that's the problem.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's different series.
You know, it's, it's like the homes, when they were going to build that extra house.
The bunker.
And that's, and there was one spot on that lot that at some point in the mystic past, somebody dug a hole. And it was actually a long time. But so now all the stuff, the natural grade is like this. It's kind of like this. And then, but.
Well, and those other two cul-de-sacs, I have taken about two feet of topsoil off of those, the used material off there, so the natural grade is two foot lower than what the natural grade was.
See, see, I'm willing to, I'm willing to say, okay, natural grade was this, and I'm, to me, I, I.
Yeah.
So we'll look at this.
And I'm trying to design all of those four homes in that lowest cul-de-sac, so that the backyard's all blended in together.
Yeah, you want the continuity to get through.
Kinda like over on Flat B, where we got that cul-de-sac, and you have the, the homes in the cul-de-sac, and then you have the ones on Summit Drive. Their backyards are all coming up fairly decent the way we've done it. But some of them couldn't have a walkout basement because of it, but they're, they've worked it out.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, very good, anything else, Robert?
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks for coming by.
I'm just concerned about the, the way, the integrity of the looks of those cul-de-sacs, cause they're also close, the homes are also close together, it'd just be nice to have them blend in a little bit more. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And good luck with everything you guys do.
Thanks, man.
And, and just so you know, I do have a, a trailer down here on that piece of ground we just ran next to you, do I need to move it?
No.
That's right, trailer.
Did that get anything?
No, is it, is it a construction trailer?
Yeah.
You're, you're fine.
It's a construction trailer, it's a no semi trailer.
Is it on the street?
No, it's down on the side, off the side.
It's okay, it's not an accessory, right?
No, it's just, we just do our insulation blankets in it.
Yeah.
Been, been there, done it, I had it.
Somebody ripped the door off it the other day, though, so.
Oh, no, no.
Anybody inside?
I actually, well, I'm confused.
I don't think they found, I think, I, I don't, I'm not gonna blame anyone, I think probably they got left open and the window off.
Put it on the side and bent it.
I don't know. If anybody broke in and they didn't find what they wanted, I don't think.
Just talking to Will the other day, where he had.
Just find somebody scratching that.
Someone took a cut with a cutting torch, a big hole beside his construction trailer, and he took all his equipment.
Oh my goodness. I was down the basement of the house one time, came out and somebody broke my toolbox, took all my power tools. Just thirty five minutes or so.
Kenny, thanks.
Thanks.
Thanks, Robert. We had, you know Brandon Garcia? He was, a couple of years ago, parked at Home Depot with a lot of his equipment in the back of his truck. Two minutes, oh, no, oh, god. Somebody loaded up.
Right now, you better lock your gas tank.
Yeah.
They are stifling you crazy.
People are. John, if you should, you want to take a look at that tomorrow?
Yeah, I see what.
If, if there's a way, yeah, cause, I mean, they did go in there and regrade everything, but, but that's not something you should get up here.
If you look though, this side, he pointed him off that corner, he still had the grass there and all that kind of stuff, it was natural.
But it kinda grugged it, but it didn't.
It's, it's.
This point, pitch is worth a thousand words, I'm willing to look at.
Yeah, and I, I totally.
If Ted knows it.
We need to have a, really a new survey to, to establish for certain what those contour lines are, that's what we're using. And we still have that.
We surveyed it from the top of the curb, and he must go two feet above the curb.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll push against that, but I'm willing to.
With the top of the curb, he is ten foot nine inches down to that little corner right there. So if you put a nine foot basement in, you're still.
It's nine foot plus ten inches for a footing.
Well, but he's gonna bury it.
I'm not worried.
No, the footing's gonna go below natural grade, cause his natural grade is gonna be his walkout.
Yeah, and then they usually have to go, we have to have thirty inches of frost, so if you're gonna do a walkout, you have to go thirty inches below. It's usually what we'll do is.
But his walkout.
Twelve foot, two foot wall on top of the ten inch footing is what we usually do for a walkout.
But his, his walkout. The natural grade will be right at the walkout door level.
Yeah.
That's still nine feet below the curb.
It's ten feet nine inches.
Well, that's irrelevant, it's the overall height that we gotta look at.
But if you look, the overall height on that wall was thirty five feet. But he's, needs to go another almost foot nine inches, if he stayed even with the curb. In order to maintain the same height but reach the ground. That make sense?
You gotta look at.
Yeah, I'm looking at a picture in every room.
All right, okay. I just, I wanna give him an opportunity to come and talk, where I think he has a point possibly with, with the elevations of those homes over there. And, um, it's not something that we can change, but, um, city council may look to us for input if he wants to make a pitch to, to, in, in those homes over there, to change the tobacco curb measurement, use that instead of, uh, you know, the line that we've got, I don't know, but, uh, I appreciate you looking at it.
Yeah, I mean, well, we can, yeah. There's a way, then, then, you know, it makes sense to do.
Maybe it's part of us, part of them.
Yeah.
You know, and working, working.
I have, I know.
This guy's been a problem.
Yeah.
Okay.
I know.
He thinks he knows what he's doing.
The homeowner.
Yeah, the homeowner, owner builder. And he's given us a lot of grief.
I don't know if it was with you or Seven, that I took that plan originally, but it was.
I think it was with Sam.
Probably a month and a half ago. And it was a Novae Jose at that point, so he has made some concessions.
Yeah.
And it's closed, seriously closed.
That's why I say, so I even, I know where he's coming, it's just like, that's hammered.
They've said, all right, I'm just not gonna build.
Yeah.
Oh, he's only up to nine today.
Yeah. No, we're looking at trust details with Corbett, and Corbett and I were looking at it, and how, I mean, it was just not even close. So now that he's getting this close, it's like, okay, well, let's go look at the physical lot now, and maybe there's something there that we can see that says, yeah, we're fine.
I think there's a way to.
Yeah, Corbett, Ted, we're not gonna have it today, and they think, you know, it's doable. Well, yeah, with some concession, some adjustment here and there, it's doable and, and keep within our, our code. And I think, I think there's a high probability that's why, that's why we'll look, and then.
Yeah.
The original thing, turn.
The whole thing of like a foot and a half.
Well, that's what we're gonna look at, so.
He wants to raise it.
He wants to raise it, I'll push back a little against that, but I'm gonna see if there's a way to make it work.
Right now, he's sitting three feet below curb line.
To make it work.
To make it work. He wants to raise it five feet, so he's two feet above the curb line. I think if he just raised it to three feet to the curb line.
Kind of more.
Then he could.
And then we work with.
Then we could work some things to make it work.
Yeah.
But then he doesn't get his fall, but his sewer will work, he just won't get his fall.
We'll look at us.
Okay, the one corner will actually slope, still slope down, for his house, but.
Uh, development agreement, um, we, again, kinda, Summer Creek was interested in moving forward with it, but then they realized that it might take away from the, uh, vacated road issue. So they said, let's, let's wait till we get this, the vacated road completed. I think it's gonna go on the city council legit, the first, no, it might go to the end of this month. Where we're having, where they have the town hall meeting, they're gonna have a short city council meeting before that. So last I heard that they would, they put it on the agenda for that night. And I've talked to several council members and they seem favorable to it, so.
To just do the swap?
Yeah, yeah, that the city will come out advantage with money and everything else.
And then not have to babysit it.
Correct, yeah, so.
I think it'll.
We'll see where it goes, but.
And it gets all improved, and there's someone else's.
Our, our attorney met with their attorney on the development agreement, ironed, tried to add a few things out, so it's still, there's quite a few things.
Yeah, that's good.
Is it, they have to do all the rock like ditches in Thousand Oaks, Flat B?
Close to it, I'm trying to think.
All the Ted's house.
I've got one, and there's still, I gotta go round the corner, down Cougar Run.
Cause there.
And then I, between me and Fred, they only got a little bit left on that one.
Don't, don't be too of a big rush, you're saying you're gonna be doing.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
I'll, I'll leave it as is, I was just talking about.
For now, I mean, pick out all this rock from the city.
Yeah. Well, and technically, the city owed me that rock, cause it was their responsibility at the time to do the ditch.
Well, that's true.
Cause they.
Don't give it a rock, you'll do the ditch.
And that's why I told Corbett, I said, hey, can I, I asked him, I said, can I buy that rock, for his lack of litigation? I said, can I buy it, and he said, well, technically, we're responsible to do all those ditches, so. And I've already.
Have a.
And he says, go ahead and add the rock.
Uh, last item really is the general plan. I've gotten everybody's input and I sent it to everybody. Uh, Larry, you might get his comments tonight, I made a copy, did you, Larry, for everybody?
Yep.
Can I just throw one thing?
Sure.
Cause I'm not sure if funding commission's aware of this, and I don't know if I'm supposed to announce or not. But I didn't know if you knew if the city applied for some funding to update the general plan? And they were awarded that funding? Their general plan update, it was note, it was two days ago.
Oh, that's news. How come you just had funding?
I don't know, Carrie, I don't want to test, still Carrie's on there, she's gonna make some announcement, or, but let's say it was six figures.
Really?
Wow.
Just over, but.
Six years.
Ten, twenty, thirty.
Uh, it was the.
Fifteen, thirty, forty, five.
They have the, it's called, uh, it's T M P.
That, that should do, that should go a long ways.
Oh, no kidding?
That should go a long ways.
Let me see.
I mean, I'd like to, you know, the stuff that I said needs to be done in, in my part, and some of that would require some professional work to be done.
Oh, no, there's a.
You know, like redoing the zoning map and all that stuff.
Yeah.
And so that would be a good use for that money.
Yeah. We've got a drainage study, that, I know that's a separate thing yet, but we want to incorporate some issues on drainage in there. And, and maybe some of that can be used for, for the drainage study.
Cause for you, it was actually Carrie and Chloe that applied for it. Um, but don't.
She's.
Love's a word, love's a word, and when Carrie tells Jack, surprise.
Axe surprise is not a word.
I.
Really?
That's great, it is, yeah, it is.
So it can only be used for the general plan and not actually doing any of that?
I'm trying to pull up the spreadsheet.
No, actually, well, I don't know. I have no idea about it, but I would think it could be used for. If there's.
Implementing some of that.
It's, it's like a technical planning assistance, uh, program. I'm just trying, but it was specifically identified in there what we were applying for.
Okay.
And I'm not finding.
Carrie's pretty good at some of that stuff.
Yeah, since I find that, but the general plan and might have been transportation. But anyway, there were two things that were specifically identified, general plan was one of them, that's the most specifically identified.
Have any had an opportunity to look through any of the material that we sent out?
I've got read a lot of the acolytes, to.
Other comments.
General plan and ordinance update. General plan and ordinance update, that's what I was saying.
Ordinance update, yeah.
Wow.
Oh, interesting.
Re-qualification.
That's like, you do it again, maybe go to attorney schools for.
Sherry, if you can hear me, you heard nothing.
Sherry, don't tell anybody.
The only reason I bring that up is because as we go into this general plan comments, I was thinking, I mean, it could be that there could be some professional help on this.
Yeah, no, I, there, yeah. There likely can be, so, um, any initial thoughts as you have read over, uh, we each kind of provided?
The, the thing that I find interesting is I've talked to some of the citizens, and the survey, I mean, the survey that was done, what, seven years ago?
Yeah.
Um, it was interesting that one of the questions had to do with future trails or pathways, and forty-four out of one hundred and thirty-three, uh, check my math, about thirty percent. Wanted a trail from the mailboxes to other parts of the city, but in talking to individuals, as long as it doesn't go behind or next to their house. They want trails, but.
Called NIMBY, not My Backyard.
Exactly, so, you know, because if you look at the map, that's in the general plan and in the city plan, four trails, one of them is supposed to go all the way around the perimeter of the city. Which means the backyard of one-third of the citizens, and, and when they look at that, they're no longer interested in trails.
I know, it's a, it is an issue that we'll have to, uh, we'll have to address, um, but I think if we can, one of the problems will be is having legitimate access. Around those areas, through easement or whatever, now we may have some existing easements, um, here's one, one thought, there, Summer Creek has asked for an easement. It's over by Terry Machado's house up on Sky Lake, there's a, just a small, narrow road that goes up there, that, it's a city's road, now we're trying to get an easement from Terry Machado. To use his property, 'cause the road's already there, but it crosses part of his property.
Just on the corner there?
Correct.
Why, does she go to the top and then cut a bandage, the house, she go open the turnies right there on the right?
But the city has its own road, but it, I mean, excuse me, its own property.
To the road.
Yeah, but not on the easement, so, Summer Creek, though, has, I think, three hundred plus acres.
Behind all the.
Behind, along the east side of those lots over there, and they've asked the city for an easement to get to that, to that property. Part of the development agreement, we've asked them what kind of easement, and they've said, really any kind.
What's their intent to do with that?
That, we don't know.
Okay.
Uh, but we've talked about a foot traffic easement up there, and what I recently proposed was that the city may would entertain that if they would reciprocate. And allow us an easement on their property up there for whatever they're going to use their property for, now, it's gonna be extremely difficult to build on up there. So, they would likely use it for trails, maybe other recreation, maybe playground, I don't know, but my point was, is if we give you an easement, and we're going to want an easement on your property. For whatever purpose you want the easement for up there, so, to work out some of those things, I know I've got an easement that runs all the way down the back of my house, and I think Lori, Lori does, too. It's for like a bridal path or whatever.
Christian trails.
Yeah, so, there's places like that around the city that could be used.
Right.
So, without, of course, now that's going down my backyard, you know, and howls, and everybody's backyard, the easement goes down that, that little gully. So, those are just things we're gonna have to look at and try to determine best, but I know, I know there was a big interest in, in trails, uh, from that last, uh, survey that was done seven years ago. Now, there was a recent one that hasn't been released yet, that Parks Trails and Recreation did.
Right.
And I don't know where the answer are on that and relationship, and they're, they're, they're just kind of, I, I don't know why they're waiting to release it, maybe.
Because we can.
Yeah, well, till the mayor says, okay, release it, anyway, well, that, something like that we can use as well in, in getting people's ideas and thoughts on. And I think it had primary to do with trails and switchbacks.
Maybe they was switchbacking that, yeah.
Yeah, so, it'll give us a little, a little feel, and, and we may need to go do another survey, I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, we'll have to look at that and see.
I mean, come back to what Larry said, I remember very well from the town hall that we had, when we put the, the draft plan out there, there was one woman that, that was over on. Outside that saw the trail going behind her house, and she, she was just like, molesting.
Yeah, yeah.
She really did.
Yeah.
Poor Jeremy would got the run of that one, I was just kind of standing there.
So, um, and, and part of your challenge on that is, is economically. Any type of trail system here is gonna have a hefty price to it.
Exactly.
Just because of where we're at, what we had, and if you don't have access, acquiring access, so where does the money come from? And, yeah, that's a whole other, we're never, if you and I just, we're never gonna have a ton of commercial here, and by ton, I mean, probably not much at all, just because where we're at, there's just no incentive for anybody to put anything here, retail, never gonna come. So, we're never gonna get that tax revenue or tax base from that, it's pretty much gonna be what we're currently doing.
Still, if you go and build a seventeen thousand square foot house.
Well, he'll pay the property tax. Well, and, and, and there are people that are willing to do some philanthropy, but, but it's still gonna be a big price tag to do any of that, I don't know. But something like that, too, could be done over time with volunteer work, also. Yeah, well, that's part of, to, to agree with, has that five oh one C, that nonprofit, that's how he worked fencing, the split relative and all that, he's worked all that with that, and usually it's a, you know, a fifty percent grant match, but you can usually donate to labor. Which is what we do, and then they, you can get the entities money to buy the turtle, which is what they did with the, the split of fencing out there, so, so there, there are ways. Well, let's, uh, let's look that material over and kind of become familiar with it, I would like to ask maybe if each of you would be willing to take that assignment on that I gave you to do this little lineup. To kind of be over that section as we go forward with it, and, so, think about it, think on it, and what, what really needs to be done, and, and, uh, we'll, we'll further discuss it, and I apologize again for such a long agenda tonight. But I'm glad we got a lot of these things addressed, and hopefully we'll be able to spend a little more time maybe on, on something like this, like in the future, and, and, um, get, get some ideas around it, and, so. Uh, anything else that anybody has? I see, I can't motion to adjourn, but I.
I was waiting to say.
Okay, now, take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move, let me adjourn.
Okay, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
You under your back? On the.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Sherry, for hanging in with us, have a good night.
I do that during city council, but I turn the camera off while we're around, eat dinner, come back, see if I missed much.
I like you. Well, when I hear on this, I have three computer screens, I do other stuff, I'm listening to you guys, then interject when you need. Uh, Roseanne, uh, latest filing, might have moved us up again, they filed a, a request a couple of days ago.
Well?
Click the big arrow, the one, the green, green arrow, and click that right there. Now go to.